I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, December 11th, 2019, and we will begin with the pledge.
Let's not debate the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright, so since it is the first meeting in December, we have election of officers for the board, so can I have a motion to temporarily suspend the rules and have the Secretary-Treasurer preside over the meeting for this purpose?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I get to vote too, aye, sorry. Alright, so Dr. Smith, it's all you.
Uh-huh, pass on the gavel. No. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Chairman. Do I have any nominations?
They nominate Karen Bailey.
Ms. Karen Bailey, do you accept the nomination for Chairman?
Yes, I do.
I'd like to have a vote. All in favor of Ms. Karen Bailey for the office of Chairman signify by raising your hand. I'm gonna show that it's her nomination. The floor is now open for nominations for the office of Vice Chairman. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chairman?
I nominate Kathy Allen.
Ms. Kathy Allen, do you accept the nomination of Vice Chairman?
I do.
Wonderful. All in favor of Ms. Kathy Allen for the office of Vice Chairman signify by raising your hand. Wonderful, congratulations. Now, let's get a couple of things off my ch- no. Is there a motion to return to the regular rules with Karen Bailey assuming the duties?
I move that we return to regular rules with Karen Bailey continuing her duties.
Wonderful. Back at you, Chairman Bailey.
Wait, do we need a second? We have to, we have to vote on that, don't we? Yes. So I need a second for that one?
I'm sorry.
Scott, can you?
You know, that's not on my cheat sheet here. Alright.
Need a second?
All in favor?
Scott needs a second, sorry.
I need a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor of returning power back to Karen Bailey?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay, thank you all very much. Uh, let's see, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, board reports, again.
Alright, so I attended the Fall Leadership Conference at Perry Hall High School hosted by Maryland Association of Student Councils, and it was a day where high school and middle school students all got together and they went through different workshops. I, along with some students from Great Mills, even presented a workshop on individuality. And so then, the day after coming back from Thanksgiving break, we had our second SLAC meeting of the year, and it was really great to get the group of students back together, and this time, our focus was more on finding our why and our what, and through that, we had a Naviance discussion by Mr. Walcott, one of the guidance counselors at Leonardtown High School. So we went through a little rundown of what Naviance is, how it works, and how it can help you with planning for the future. And so with planning for the future, there is a lot of stress that comes to students, along with stress from classes, sports, and extracurriculars, so then we had a discussion presented by Ms. Schrader on ways to cope with stress and some anti-stress strategies to decrease some of the stress that we feel as students in our everyday lives.
So, um, this past week, or over the weekend and week, I attended the Maryland Farm Bureau Conference, and in that conference, going to a lot of mini-sessions and just some of the speakers and everything, there is a lot of push through, not only the Maryland Farm Bureau, but the American Farm Bureau for youth. They are our future, and so, not only in monetary value, trying to, you know, push a lot of, like, grants and things towards our youth and education of our youth on farming and the environment and natural resources, but also using the people with the expertise to come in and speak with our students and, you know, and also working with the FFA, which is the Future Farmers of America. One of the, um, it's basically the Maryland Farm Bill, a focus is focused instead of just really on junior high and high school, it's also focusing on pre-K through 12th grade to make sure that these students are educated on, like I said, the natural resources, farming, forestry, our waterways. They, I also went to a talk on how to get fresh fruit and vegetables to our schools, and they're, they're actually kind of a long process one, and it was a long talk too, on how this would happen with small farms trying to get it to our institu- they call institutions, whether it's the colleges, the high school, or not just high schools, but the school systems, and also our people that are incarcerated. It was very interesting because in the talk, the lady was, I think she was from Montgomery County, but she actually had heard about our school system and how it would be, Ms. Megan, what is her last name?
Dorian.
Yeah. How she has changed things in doing a lot of fresh fruit and vegetables for our students, how she has gone, like, to the farmer's market, and, you know, like, the kids are learning how to shuck the corn. So that was actually a conversation in there, and there was another school system that did come up to me and talk to me about how they could try to get their school system also eating healthier. So, um, it was a great conversation all around, and like I said, they are really working on educating our youth on farming practices and healthy eating and the environment, so.
I attended Banneker Elementary about two weeks ago. I'm a member of American Legion Post 221, and I joined some of my colleagues. They gave a very interesting, like, a 45-minute instructions on the American flag, and I thought I knew everything about the American flag, and I learned some things. One, that after the Revolution, the original flag had 13 stripes and 13 stars, and actually they had 15 stripes up until, I believe, the War of 1812. There was handouts given, little comic books for each of the kids, we gave them, each child had a flag and a ruler, and it was very interesting. I was watching the students, and you know how first graders, sometimes they get distracted? They didn't with this presentation. It was very, very interesting, so that was mine.
Let's see, a couple things. Last week, we had our joint meeting with the county commissioners after we had our special meeting over here. Thanks to Ms. Howe for doing the presentation on the CIP, and Scott for educating anyone as much as we possibly can right now about Kerwin and what might happen. I think the main takeaway that I emphasized over there, and I'll emphasize here again, with the change in leadership in the, in the House and the Senate this year and the Maryland Legislature, it's, it is very important that both of these boards continue to communicate with the Southern Maryland delegation, because the impact of what the potential school funding issues are going to be and Kerwin are critical right now for our school system. So, you know, there were a couple of comments over there that, you know, well, it's gonna pass, we're just gonna have to deal with it. I, I don't believe that. I think that, you know, advocating for the, you know, the counties outside the Big Five or Big Six, I think is extremely important, and that's, that just needs to be the focus, you know, after the holidays and as we move into the next legislative session, so, and with, with our quote-unquote "pizam lobbyists" down there at the other end of the table, his plate will be very full.
We'll be there. We'll be there.
Ms. Washington.
Thank you.
I attended the St. Mary's County retirees' holiday celebration, and they do that every year. It is a wonderful occasion. It's held at the Elks Lodge, and I am especially grateful and thankful for them, for all that they continue to do for our schools and our community, such as, they have given $250 donation to each of our elementary schools, and now they're gonna start on the middle schools. They supported two students from the Forest Center to attend the Skills USA competition. They also support our shoe fund, which they have given $500 towards. They serve as mentors, tutors, encouragers, and volunteers in many capacities. Also, at the luncheon, they wrote thank you notes to educators at our schools, thanking them and encouraging them from someone who has already been in their shoes. So, they are still giving back, and I appreciate what they do, so I'm making an effort to at least be at that festive event where I can thank them on behalf of the board what they have done and what they continue to do for us. Thank you.
Last Friday, Mrs. Washington and I both attended the Chopticon High School Madrigal Dinner. It was a wonderful performance, a great evening, and for me, it is truly the way I kick off the holiday season. If you've not had an opportunity to experience it, I, I hope that next year you will make a plan to do so. They have a dinner, a Friday night and Saturday night, and then a Sunday afternoon performance, and it was just absolutely fantastic, so congratulations to the Peace Pipers for, for their performance.
Fantastic group. Uh, let's see, we had SLAC, yes. Board of Ed joint meeting, yes. We went to a track meet together, the track meet for all the tri-county area. There's another one, uh, tonight. It's a good time to drive up to Prince George's County for something that starts at about 4:30, which is a great-
Seven o'clock is Helen's time, so I'm good.
Which is a, which is a great, yeah, that's a lot of fun.
At least you didn't do my, like, my son, about the first event and the last event.
Event, so you just get to stay for the whole?
Of the mega-meet, 50 schools.
Yeah. Uh, before I had SLAC, I, we had the Superintendent's Advisory Group of Excellent Employees. Those are all the Teachers of the Year that are nominated each one of the school, and education support professionals from each one of the schools, and our leaders from Central Office all get together. That group is called Sage, so you are the SLAC group, that group is called Sage. We met right at the end of November to talk about what was going on in the lives of education leaders and support professionals. A really, a really great session. I get to meet with them about four times a year, and it's, we have a very loose agenda, so you just kind of sit down and talk, and that's really great. The SLAC group also talked about the equity policy that, that's coming before you today for second reading. The ESMC had their holiday open house yesterday, and we were all present, and that was a very good time. I had to leave early to come back because we had the Equity Committee meeting last night here to talk about where they were with their work, what was coming before you as a board, and then what would be the next steps as we talk about moving policy into regulation. And that was all really quite exciting. The only other thing, we had National Honor Society induction at Leonardtown High School, that was a great night. We had new teacher seminar for December where we eat Christmas cookies and cold cuts and, and talked a little bit about what they're gonna do for the last day of school before we go to our winter break. So we had a great conversation of do's and don'ts, because we've all learned that, you know, you wanna make sure that you have something engaging and enjoyable that sends off everybody in just the right way, and you kind of go through, 'cause that is a two-hour early release day on a Friday before winter break. So, I think the new teachers are putting some thought into it, and that's a really good thing. I did get to go up for the tri-county Superintendent Panel Participant Group for Leadership Southern Maryland, so I got to join Ms. Kim Hill, Dr. Kim Hill, and Dr. Daniel Curry to talk about what's going on in the lives of our school systems. I will tell you that St. Mary's County and the Southern Maryland group, we really have, we really have a lot to, to be thankful for, and all three of our counties, for the wonderful people that we have working with our kids and the wonderful kids that we have in our school. It was really quite heartening to be with such a great group of, of people and participants. Leadership Southern Maryland draws all the people that wanna learn more about the area and who are in leadership roles. It was really quite great. So, it was not a snow day today. It was not a two-hour late-entry day. We will not have snow before Christmas, before winter, before holiday break, but I did have the opportunity to do a run-through with Dr. Walker and all the support staff this morning between 3:30 and 4:30. It's always a great deal of, a great deal of fun. For those of you who have negative things to say on, about my decision on Twitter, you know, I didn't see any snow. I just didn't see any snow in any roads. But with that, I turn it back to Chairperson Bailey.
Okay, so first we have our recognitions. Dr. Hall, the United Way of St. Mary's County.
Good morning, Dr. Hall.
Good morning. So give me just one minute.
Right.
And here we go. So this is a very heartwarming recognition, and we're here to recognize the United Way for their contribution of snack sacks in our Title I schools, and we have some special guests that I will introduce in just a moment. So a little bit about them. The United Way provides snack sacks to St. Mary's County's public schools. Snack sacks are nondescript, you know, they come in, in blue bags that are distributed to students in need, and that's all handled through the Office of the Principal. On Friday, students are given a blue bag filled with various food items, they're staple, they're substantial, they're nutritious, and on Monday, students return the empty bag and it gets refilled. Here are the kinds of foods, the healthy, nutritious, filling foods that are included for you to take a look at what exactly is in those bags. This is what the Title I schools have. Seventeen children, families at Carver, 12 from Green Holly, 12 from Greenview Knowles, 16 from Lexington Park, 15 from Park Hall. Here are some quotes that I just thought really would warm your heart, and all, you know, just things that the schools could, could share with us. "I love getting my blue bag." That's from a student. "I look forward to this bag every week. We usually run out of food, and at times, we just eat cereal, so this food is great." "I share it with my family. The snack sacks help out my family. I appreciate the snack sacks, and they help keep my kids fed." That came from a parent. "We want to thank publicly the United Way for all that they do for our children in need. We are very, very grateful." We do have a certificate, and please allow me to ask some special guests to come up. We have Ms. Suzie Fowler, who we all know very well. She is the United Way Board of Directors Chairperson. So if you would come up and stand. And then with her, we have Ms. Susan Lloyd, who is the United Way Chairperson.
Executive Director.
Executive Director, thank you. And then we have Mr. George Mattingly from Southern Maryland Food Bank. Dr. Smith?
I'm gonna give you the certificate. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So, I just can't say enough about the way in which fantastic groups such as the United Way partner with St. Mary's County Public Schools for the benefit of our kids. The snack sack in particular, we have been doing this for how many years? Nine years. This is something that the current principal, or the former, former principal at Lexington Park brought down here and then spread out to all of our title schools. So, with that, I'd really like to have Ms. Suzie Fowler talk a little bit about how she continues to partner with and serve all of the wonderful students of St. Mary's County Public Schools. Ms. Fowler, if you could say a word or two.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and thank you for this recognition. We appreciate it very much. The United Way part, the United Way partners with the Southern Maryland Food Bank, who does the good work of packing the sacks and delivering the sacks, keeping it all straight. The information about who receives the sacks is confidential at the school level. The Southern Maryland Food Bank has no idea who the recipients are, but they are the ones who ensure that the, that the bags are nutritious and that they are delivered on time every week. So, what I, what I would like to share with folks here and folks at home who might be watching is that indeed, in St. Mary's County, we have hungry children. In the midst of the affluence of our community, there are children who don't receive enough nutrition. It is heartbreaking, and it is something that we can do something about. As a community, we can come together and we can make a difference, and we can work with the Southern Maryland Food Bank, donate to the United Way. There are a number of churches in St. Mary's County who also provide snack sacks to various schools. So, um, as little as $1 a paycheck for St. Mary's County employees pays for three snack sacks. $12 a paycheck pays to sponsor one child for an entire school year. Small amounts of money can make a big difference in the lives of children. And so, for those at home, you can go to the United Way website and donate, and for others, you can contact the United Way. We need to do something about this. No child should go hungry. No child should have their education derailed because of hunger, and as everyone in this room knows, the only ticket out of poverty is an education, and we want to be working together to ensure that every single child has an equitable opportunity to receive the stellar education that is offered by St. Mary's County Public Schools.
No, thank you, thank you. You wanna pause and get a picture right here in front of all of us? If you can come over here.
Sure.
This is where you are photo shoot, so. Center yourself.
Everybody, we have one public comment?
Yes, we do. Melinda Marchleitz.
Okay. Alright, I will read the statement as you approach. If you can come on up here. Let's see. "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take the time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the Superintendent. We will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Keep in mind, please, that the Board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented at public comment." You've signed in at the beginning of the meeting, thank you. "Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else, and if you have any written statements, if you give them to Kathy, then she'll put them on our Google Drive, so we'll have them."
Well, I actually have nothing negative to say. So, I'm sorry you went through all of that, but my name's Melinda Marchleitz. I live right by Leonardtown Middle School. What I am here to say is just to publicly, in a school-type setting, bring up the topic of the 7/11 that's proposed to go in right across the street from the middle school. Because it is posted, hopefully there are parents and teachers and administrators and board members that know that that's going on, but I'm afraid that that's not necessarily the case, because the signage is not necessarily something that, as you're driving by, you're looking at, because it is such a busy intersection, you're trying to avoid children and cars and buses and all the crazy that's there. But, there is a 7/11 that's proposed to go in there. I live in the neighborhood right behind there, as I stated, in Hanover Farm. And our neighborhood is severely concerned about the safety for our children that are going to the middle school and the high school. And so I know, as you said, you can't make a statement on that at this time, but I just really wanted to bring up that topic to the board members and have it publicly known that that's going on, so that if there, if you share any of the concern that we do, that maybe you would have an opportunity to discuss that amongst people in the community that you know that may be able to kind of bring up those safety issues, whether it be traffic safety, whether it be the safety of the students that are having recess in the parking lot of the middle school, whether it be the health of the students regarding that increased access to vaping products and smoking products. There's just a plethora of issues, and I, I actually was very lucky to have the time to discuss this with Dr. Smith and another one of the residents of my community, and I think that that meeting was very, very productive, and I understand that as a school district, it's not necessarily your place to, you know, really assert a lot of push, but I think sometimes conversations in private settings go a long way. So I would just respectfully encourage you to have those conversations. And the next meeting about the 7/11, at the Commissioners' Meeting, is January 27th at 6:30 PM, and there are also public documents available on the Land Use website for the State Mary's County. If anyone would like that information, I would be happy to share that with you. There is also, there are, were, I don't know, they may have blown over at this point, but there were white signs placed on the corner. It's on the corner of Medley, Medley's Neck Road and Point Lookout that has more information. You are also able to access the entire plans and the scope of the project at the Land Use Department. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Next up is the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move approval of the Consent Agenda, which consists of the approval of minutes from November 20th and December 3rd, Personnel, Teachers, Athletic and Medical Care Supplies and Equipment and Office Supplies Contract as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That item is passed. First on our action item is procurement of cleaning supplies with Mr. Varner.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
As always, thank you for the opportunity to talk with you and share with you an initiative that I think can be very impactful to the business of supporting schools from an operations perspective. Bear with me for some background information first. As you're aware, in 2018, you approved our procurement method of cleaning supplies on several contracts with, with multiple vendors, and this, albeit has, has, has filled our needs to a certain extent, it does create multiple logistical challenges, and I'll get to those shortly. A little bit about how we're processing the acquisition of cleaning supplies and getting them out to schools right now. As you can see from this graphic, after we've received and processed these orders at our warehouse for these supplies, you can see a little flow chart here about, we do use SchoolDude, we incorporated that a couple of years ago in an effort to be more efficient, which we're always trying to do, but you can see from, from Building Service Manager placing the order to the approval of the order, to making sure we have those supplies in our warehouses, to building a delivery, to scheduling that delivery, and then making that delivery. Multiple points of failure there, as we have one delivery driver, one warehouse manager, one logistics manager. More often than not, everything goes off okay, but, but it does present challenges when, when employees take leave or, or other issues arise. I mentioned a challenge with logistics. Managing multiple vendor contracts is time-consuming at both the central level and in my department. We currently have nine separate contracts with eight vendors on nearly 200 products. Storage and shelf life of those materials is something that we have difficulty managing now, in terms of keeping products on the shelf before they, they pass their expiration date. That's a problem due to our building service square footage ratio. Off the record, our, our staff are, are very busy during the day supporting education, and that's one of the things that at, at times gets deprioritized in, in favor of those services. We're always out there looking for new ways to improve our efficiency. One of those ways is a vendor-managed inventory system. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that now. We've researched several systems. This is a growing trend in, in educational office and health systems across the country. Calvert County, Charles County, Queen Anne's County, Fairfax are using this system. Johns Hopkins University and Hospital System, University of Maryland, UVA. So we went out and we took a look with, with Ms. Costner's help, researched a lot of different vendors that offer this type of a service program, and looked at some different contracts. Calvert and Charles County are both contracted with, with DECON, who we know- Calvert and Charles County are both contracted with Decon, who we know very well. They've been providing us with equipment, service on that equipment, cleaning supplies for many years. This is a promotion there that they really start to flow out. And many of the organizations I mentioned are contracted with Decon as well. Under a VMI program, our process would drastically change. As you can see, our role would be at every, every school and office building to establish thresholds for each product of how much of that product needs to be on the shelf at all times in order to support the activities of that particular site. Representatives from Decon would visit each site every month electronically with an iPad, take inventory, determine how many, how much space below that threshold we currently are for each of those products, generate an electronic order which gets immediately sent back to Decon in Upper Marlboro. They guarantee that delivery within 24 hours. Decon delivers, unloads, shelves and organizes all of those products at each site for us. They have little QR codes on shelving units. They'll even install shelving units if we need them for some of their services. And they provide us, very important to me, they provide us with data about that order, how that contrasts with the inventory. And we can track monthly usage of every product in a much easier way than we can right now with the SchoolDude software. This program would benefit our department in a couple, and obviously there's an efficiency for our building service team members. Building service managers spend time inventorying their own products, building orders in SchoolDude, sending those in and then unpacking the deliveries when they come. I mentioned the vast increase in inventory data and tracking capability. Decon guarantees a 90-day shelf life for all products. If a product's on our shelves past 90 days, we get it for free. So it's in their best interest to have their products working efficiently. And you do that by using them within their shelf life. We'll have better access to full green cleaning efforts. We're very green right now. We're not 100%. We'd like to get there. They offer not only the products we would need, but training and support in that regard. And we would save time for other multiple employee roles, and I'll get to that in a few seconds. Obviously, the management of one vendor for all of these products versus multiple in the last, you know, since you approved in 2018, I can't necessarily quantify how many different product changes or price changes, quantity adjustments. We have to make those adjustments and sometimes make addendums to contracts and compare, you know, if they change how many are in a case or the size of their item in a case and how that changes the pricing of those products. Obviously, without us doing deliveries to every school once, possibly more than once a month, we'll save tremendously on not only time, but fuel costs of driving our trucks and vans up and down the roads in Saint Mary's County. We will no longer be storing the vast majority of our products in our warehouse, which will add storage space, which has been a definite need in our school system, a need to store things and educational supplies. And Decon offers its VMI customers other value-added services, such as training on products. We're able to, if we don't like one of the products of theirs, they will help us research and select another one that they don't create themselves or currently possess within 24 hours. And they offer very detailed equipment training services, which is very valuable to our staff. We can take advantage of that during our summer training sessions. A cost comparison, our estimated finish for cleaning supplies for FY '20 this year is $388,000. We estimate an increase in that due to some price increases and also the need for us to procure feminine hygiene products at all bathrooms at schools for grade six through 12 next year. The cost for the Decon service charge is $16,000 per year, based on a per-month charge per custodial closet. And they charge anywhere from $30 to $50 per visit. And that's once a month, depending on the size of the closet. So a White Marsh closet might be around $30, whereas a high school would be around $50. Total that up for all of our sites and offices and it's $16,000. And you can see, we do have a total there for you. I mentioned earlier FTE, efficiency gains. These are estimates, but as you can see, we have a variety of areas that'll be able to focus on other areas of their job, other priorities. This will, this will really change the way we do business and how we get things from our vendors to our schools in time so that all of our schools are fully supported. Our plan of implementation, given your approval, January 1st, we'll begin purchasing products from Decon and begin consolidation of paper products and dispensers across our school district. We currently use, I think, four or five different types of paper towels and paper towel holders and the same number of toiletries as well. Starting in February through May, we plan to pilot the VMI program at four sites in the northern part of the county, get them fully onboard with the monthly inspections and ordering that way, with full implementation to follow in the summer. And we plan on spending FY '21 gathering data, assessing how well this is working for us to try to determine if we'd like to continue with this type of a service. Through research with Ms. Costner, we've concluded that the Charles County Public Schools contract would be the most appropriate vehicle for us to use. It was advertised on eMaryland Marketplace and awarded on November 9th of 15. It's valid through November. If all goes well, we've had conversations with Charles County. We're going to work with them to rebid that contract and have more specific specifications on that. And Decon has agreed to extend all those contract terms to our school district. At this time, I'd love to answer any questions that you have about Decon and VMI.
Could you explain more on how the Decon VMI program supports the full green cleaning efforts?
Right now, we purchase, I think we're at 76% or 77% green cleaning products, meaning that covers your cleaning solutions, your floor wax, your floor strippers, when you refinish a wood floor in a gymnasium or on a stage at a high school. Decon is a company that creates and makes, produces a lot of cleaning products on their own. And they have, they have access to a lot more green cleaning products. With their training and their program and that program's support, we'll be able to access more of that and get more education down here to our staff to allow us to become closer to 100% green.
Okay, I have several questions for you. Okay, first, I know you did talk about the universities, but I don't know if I would compare the school system to the universities because they are moving, it's so many more products through compared to, I would say, a county school system. I know you did talk about Calvert and Charles having this contract. In your research, did you go look at any other companies that did this type of service besides just this one, the Decon?
Yes, Lowe's offers a VMI program to businesses, Staples. There were a couple of other ones as well.
But there's no other pri, not, I'm not talking about, I guess because Lowe's is more of a, across the United States. But anything else that's more, I guess, local, like say, something in Calvert County that offers a service like this? Or you didn't put that out on Marketplace to see if somebody did?
We didn't put it out there, but we did not, we did not find any local business that was offering this kind of services that Decon does.
Okay. The other thing too, as I read here, it says 47.50 in addition to the cost of products. That's per visit. Now, is that when, like say, when this person comes to do inventory and is added each school? And also, the product would be coming within 24 hours. Is that another 47.50 when they come to unload the product?
Nope. It's a one-time charge for the inspection of the closet. It's not another charge for the delivery and the setup. It's a monthly charge.
Okay, that's one, okay. Is that what you were talking about, like some closets might be $50 first?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. And then, have you looked at your system, was there a different way? I know that you have eight, eight different vendors out there right now for, would you say, eight vendors for nine contracts? Okay. Were there any vendors that maybe you could combine, like pull it down to maybe three vendors versus eight? Did you look at anything like that?
Well, in the past, we had, we had bid out each product individually and went with the lowest price regardless of vendor. If that happened to be three vendors for a certain contract period of time, it would be that. But going with the lowest price, this particular time in 2018, that turned out to be eight vendors, nine vendors, excuse me.
Okay. And I, with how it's set up now with having eight vendors, I do see the, you know, the cost savings in personnel and things like that, I do. But I just don't know if there's, if you went out and did a, you know, just to see what it was, like if you came back, like say, with three vendors or four vendors, would that cut the cost for your, the time for your employees to be delivering the material? Because when, what it really looks like, it's like $34,000 increase, you know, from the current year. And, and I could see the way it's set up now, this going to this new company would be, you know, an overall cost savings. But if you went out to, you know, re-went out to bid on eMarketplace and combined some of these vendors, would it be more cost-effective than going to the 30, you know, increase to going to this company?
It may be from an administrative invoice processing standpoint. But once, once deliveries are at our warehouse, we'd still have the same procedure in terms of unloading that, managing that in the warehouse, building orders, delivering those orders, unpacking those orders. And then, still the challenges with keeping track of the individual, excuse me, individual inventory pool that's at the sites and offices.
Okay, then the other question I have is, I know they have a 90-day guarantee on the product. Is there anything where they would take back, like say, a product if it's not being, I guess, like you're really not using it? Would they take any product back or no?
They'll take it back regardless of the reason why it hasn't been used after 90 days.
Okay.
I think their goal is to try to help us shell the things that we use and use the data that's driven out of this system to help make those decisions, which will help us not purchase things that we're not going to be using.
Okay. All right, thank you.
The thing that, interesting thing in your proposed process were, Decon's actually doing the inventory for you. And the first thing that jumped to me was, what incentive do they have to not try to, or incentive to kind of front-load your inventory? In other words, putting in more, ordering more material than you really need? Is there any balancing or any way to check on the inventory?
Who sets the par levels, the school system or Decon?
We do.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay, so in other words, when they're doing the, when they're ordering, they're ordering to our specifications? Okay, I see.
We'll set up those thresholds initially based on the data that we do have in SchoolDude from the past two and a half years, based on individual school usage, seasons of the year, things like that. And the data that they provide us moving forward will help us adjust those thresholds, up or down, as the need.
I see, okay. And then, yep, the only other question I have is, it would appear to me that you'd have savings on economies of scale. In other words, this company would be handling, not only carrying inventory for our school system, but other school systems. So I didn't see any, any data in the estimated cost that might reflect these economies of scale. In the cost comparison, for example, what you're proposing, as I see it, it's going to cost us an extra $16,000 to use VMI, everything being equal. Is that true?
That's my perception, yes.
Okay. That's all I.
So I have two quick questions. So for the, for the efficiency on the hours worked, the 105 hours, what is the expectation now that those individuals are going to be freed up to do now that they're not taking inventory and dealing with deliveries?
They're going to reprioritize things that are already on their plate.
Okay.
And do them in a more efficient, quicker, in many cases, more effective manner.
Such as?
Building service team, obviously, the time that a manager isn't spending placing orders, receiving orders, stocking shelves, things like that. They can be out doing detailed cleaning tasks in schools during the day. In my, I have a delivery, for instance, we're, we have one delivery driver who runs Metro two days a week and hospital packs for the Forest Center every Wednesday. So many of the deliveries of books, supplies, things like that kind of get pushed without running this. They'll have the ability to do their job and support schools in a more quick and efficient way.
Okay.
Essentially, oh, go ahead.
No, 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 that's good. I just, I just needed some examples of what else they would be deployed in doing since, you know, they're not, they're not handling inventory now. And then, my last question is with the, if we're piggybacking on the Charles County Schools contract and if it's valid through November of 2020, if Charles, so we would go out and rebid that contract with them, so then the prices that we have now could change mid fiscal year after, correct?
Conceivably, yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I see that this is a way of being more efficient with our human resources because we know that we try to hire more employees, but a budget time, we usually cannot do that because we don't have enough money. So I see this as you looking at another way to be more efficient with the personnel that you have. And it's going to save us, we will not have to use additional storage space to stock products. And that's one thing we had looked at, to have this big central warehouse to store everything. And so it'll be based on the available space that we already have for 30 days at a cost of $16,000 for the whole system.
Right.
Right? And it's going to save us time, energy, fuel, personnel cost, stocking and restocking time. And it's going to be piloted at four sites in January. So you'll have an opportunity to tweak things or abandon things if it doesn't work correctly. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
I, I saw that Decon would provide training, but it looks like they're going to provide that training in Upper Marlboro at their warehouse. Is there any thought that they would come down here to provide training to our building service workers and other personnel?
They do that at our request now, even though we're not VMI customers. They're very responsive. But yes, VMI, they will come down to see us. We're not going to have to go up there for that type of training.
Okay. I think the, the cost savings and the personnel savings are worth the trial period. And I, I would like to see you come back to us at the end of the time that you evaluate this to determine whether or not you want to continue. And, and, you know, I'd really like to see what, you know, the specific benefits beyond what you've already presented to us, if there are others that.
I'd be happy to.
But I think especially the ability to, to really track in a better way the products that are being used, the frequency and that we'll not be purchasing things that perhaps we didn't need to purchase, so.
That's the big benefit for me.
Absolutely.
I am. Oh, I'm sorry. You say you start the, the supply of feminine hygiene products in sixth grade?
Six through 12.
What about elementary? Because some girls need it in elementary, maybe in the fourth and fifth grade to be in their restrooms?
We'll supply that as needed. We do that now.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I believe there was a change in the law.
Right, yes.
That requires us to provide these products.
It's effective July 1st of next year, yeah.
Okay.
Could you, could, just real quick thing, could we, you know, maybe put you on the calendar for like June or July or something like that? So that we don't forget about it?
Absolutely.
Come back and let us know how you. Um, come back and let us know how you're making out.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Any more? All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of Charles County Public Schools contract VMI fifteen sixteen for the purchase of cleaning supplies from Dacon Products Company as part of its vendor-managed inventory system at an estimated cost of four hundred thirty-four thousand dollars annually.
Do I have a second?
My second. My computer's talking to me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much.
F one.
I just put.
Is that what triggers it?
Hold it, I don't know why it's still not, but.
Okay, Mr. Wyatt and Ms. Long.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, great. So we come for you today for, uh, yeah, approval of acceptance of another, uh, round of Safe Schools Fund grants, uh, as well as a companion categorical budget adjustment that's required, uh, based on the grant award. So, uh, we applied for and have been notified, uh, that we have, uh, received the award for the Safe Schools Fund. It's established by the Maryland Safe to Learn Act of two thousand eighteen, created the Safe Schools Fund. The purpose of the fund is to provide grants to local school systems to enhance school safety. Uh, Safe School Funds Grants must be used to supplement existing state and local funds for program activities and must not replace those funds that have been appropriated for the same purpose. Uh, this year, we have been awarded two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, specifically, the grant will, uh, fund a list of a variety of things that we've been doing, have already established, uh, to include, in my department, uh, the school overwatch program with the sheriff's office. This is the overtime program for focusing law enforcement patrols at elementary schools and other schools that do not have a school resource officer assigned to the building. That has been in place since the beginning of the school year. Uh, the good news is the funding, as I have been told, is retroactive, so we're gonna be able to reimburse the sheriff for his current costs and continue the program through the end of the year. Uh, the other, uh, projects that are listed are Ms. Long, so I'll let her describe what they're doing with those.
And as Mr. Wyatt said, it's a continuation of our efforts really from the, um, awards that we received last year. So the community counseling for identified schools where students are in need. Um, the prepare training for, um, staff, for the school-based, uh, mental health staff to, um, prepare, uh, in, in preventative and pre- um, preparation measures um, in, in event of a school crisis. Conscious discipline training, which we did last year for early childhood, and now we're moving into grades four and five. And our continu- continuation of restorative practices for the community building and restorative work in the schools.
So along with that, I, I was fortunate enough to get, I got all the money in my budget, so. I need, I need to share with Cheryl, so, if the real.
We're requesting the categorical budget adjustment for, um, as described in the reallocation request below. So the eighty-one thousand and thirty dollars for instructional, uh, salaries and six thousand four hundred and eighty-two for fixed charges is for the sub-coverage for, um, staff to participate in the trainings. And then sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars for health services covers the community counseling and also the, um, prepare materials and the conscious discipline materials. For a total of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars that, um, is currently sitting in operations category from safety and security. So the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
I have no questions, thank you.
No questions.
No questions, thank you.
I'm just gonna make one point, is that all of the funding that comes out of the Safe School Funds goes directly to the school system? So once again, the MOU that we have with the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Department is imperative in order to pay and reimburse those deputies for their overtime costs for the, uh, for the school watch program. So the sheriff's office is not allowed to apply for any grants through that.
See those funds directly, they must be conveyed through us, yes.
So.
And that's why we have such a great working partnership with the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Department.
So once again, kudos to everyone who works to keep that MOU in place and up to date, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
This is a, this is excellent. Could you give me an example of the community counseling, how that works, and who are our community counseling partners, how students are identified?
Yes, so students, um, students are identified by their school counselors, school administrators, teachers. Um, currently, remember, we had funding last year that, um, we did an RFP for. Five, um, agencies were approved and also, including Center for Children. So right now, we do have services in three of our schools, Lexington Park Elementary, Greenview Knowles, and Spring Ridge through Center for Children. And we also have identified Green Holly, Park Hall, and Carver as students, as schools that, uh, would have students in need that we're looking to provide services for.
And the parent takes the child to the particular counseling center, correct?
So.
Free of charge?
Right, so the benefit to this is that we actually have space allocated in our buildings for the counselor to come in, in the building. So the school staff works with, um, the Center for Children, uh, clinical counselor, and the parent to coordinate those services. So the student actually gets the services in the school without missing, you know, being, um, taken from the school to attend meetings outside of the school and miss instruction.
That's perfect.
It's a benefit.
Cause some people don't have transportation, can't get there, so that's perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm a little confused by this. Um, it says that we, that these, uh, grant funds can't replace funds already appropriated for the same purpose. But that, is that what you're suggesting, or that's not what you're suggesting we're doing?
That's the parameters of the, the, the grant as it's established, the, the Safe Schools Fund for itself. So they have to be for new and, and continuing programs.
Okay.
So we have funded these Safe Schools, it wasn't the Safe Schools Fund last year, it's now been titled that, but last year, we received the grant funding for all of these programs, to support these programs, and this is continuing this year.
Okay, so this is a grant we already have?
It's, it, I would say it's part, it's, it's a continuing part, and I think this is gonna be part of the continuing appropriations that I'm expecting to be in place as a result of the Safe Schools Act of two thousand eighteen, until the legislature decides that it's gonna discontinue. So we're anticipating this, very similar to the IAC money, the, this, the capital money that's being allocated for school security, physical security projects. Uh, we're, we're now anticipating a release of round three of that funding, so, um, and again this year.
I think the confusion is, is that whatever the legislature passes in each budget session, they, they still give it to the school safety
Correct.
group, but they call it like a different bucket of money each year, right?
It's a different, yeah.
So, but it's not necessary for us to, um, approve, uh, acceptance of this grant, all we're, correct?
No.
Have we already, we've already approved?
We've rece- we have received the notification of award, and I think you, you need to accept it, that it's, it, we can put it, place it in the budget. I'll defer to this record on that, so.
Cause normally we would accept the grant and
Categorically.
And then, and then have the categorical.
So the entire grant amount of two, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars was actually included in your adopted budget? So that, you've already formally approved this.
Okay.
This is just a reallocation, categorical reallocation of the one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that was originally placed in Mr. Wyatt's budget and needs to be reallocated to Ms. Long's budget.
Okay. Yeah, that, it's, I guess I was just.
It is confusing because the monies were not appropriated in the correct cate- categories.
Right, and, and that's where my confusion is, it, it's.
Well, right, and that was, it was not the part of them, it was really actually the part of
The state.
The, the state, because they had to, where they were, it, where they wanted the schools to use the funds, they were giving the schools too much money to use them for what the purposes were.
Right.
So then we had to go back and, um, ask for them to be used in different categories in order to continue the services that we already spent the money on last year with the money that was distributed.
Okay.
So.
It's a problem whenever you don't just simply fund.
Right, right.
When you don't just build into a formula, you simply say, schools, you will receive a per pupil allocation of this amount. Instead, you have a whole bunch of hands in saying, you're gonna get this money, but this money can only be used for this. And you're gonna get this money, and it can only be used for this.
So last year, Kathy, if there were like five categories that we could use the money on, this year, they changed it and it was only like three. And everyone's like, we can't spend this much money on these three categories, it's impossible. So then we had to go back and go, and that's how that all worked, from the background.
But before you today is the money that we've, we believe, we've, we now know that we have received, cause we, we, we thought we were gonna get it, we were banking on that we were gonna get it, we built it into the budget, assuming we were gonna get it. We just received word that we are really going to get it, and now we have to move it into the right place.
Yeah, I, I understand, it's just.
The best is that we get to go before the county commissioners after this, then to approve your categorical transfer of the existing stuff, so.
And explain all this again. Start that conversation now.
We will.
Roll my eyes, um.
Got it.
Yeah.
I have a question. If students from another school of those not listed need these counseling services, and they are identified, can they get the services too?
Yeah, we continually assess that, the needs of the students in all of our schools, actually, so it's, it's fluid, you know, they're not, um, we can adjust as needs arise.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Put that money back over here.
Any more questions? All right, may I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve and acceptance of this FY twenty twenty categorical budget adjustment in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars and submittal of this budget adjustment to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval.
Do I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. All right.
Thank you.
Just roll it under your threat assessment policy. Scott. We need to move the TV forward for the next two big presentations.
Or I can move that back.
Whatever you want to do, but you know they're gonna have to see what Ms. Howell has to present, cause it's gonna be. Or you can go ahead.
Oh, okay, so.
Sorry.
Yep.
Don't wipe me, I'm just gonna be over your movements.
This is the second reading of the threat assessment policy. Um, on November twentieth, it was, uh, put out for public comment. The November twentieth Board of Education meeting out for a public comment, and there was no input received at that time. Um, the background, which is actually the purpose, um, in the grant, I am gonna read the purpose as it's stated in the policy. Um, the slide, slide there shows, uh, the information as well. The purpose is the Maryland Safe to Learn Act of two thousand eighteen, codified Title VII, subtitle fifteen of the education article of the Maryland Code, requires that each local Board of Education adopt a threat assessment team policy. The policy shall provide for the establishment of the threat assessment teams, TAT, and include, one, a process for regular assessment and intervention if an individual exhibits behavior that may pose a threat to the safety of another individual attending or working in a public school. Two, standards for timely response and procedures for coordination among the members of an assessment team, including referral to appropriate local law enforcement officials, the local school system, and a superintendent regarding information indicating that an individual may pose a threat of violence to a school. And three, standards and procedures for referral of an individual for evaluation services or treatment when appropriate. The policy statement, the purpose of this policy is to establish procedures for the assessment and intervention with individuals whose behavior poses a threat to the safety of school, staff, and/or students. The policy includes three, three definitions. The first one is threat. A threat is the expression of an intent to cause physical harm to someone. The threat may be expressed, communicated behaviorally, orally, visually, in writing, electronically, or through any other means. It is to be considered a threat regardless of whether it is observed by or communicated directly to the target of the threat or observed by or communicated to a third party, and regardless of whether the target of the threat is aware of the threat. Threats may be direct or indirect. Next definition is the threat assessment. A threat assessment is a comprehensive process emphasizing an appraisal of observed or reasonably observable behaviors to identify potentially dangerous or violent situations, to assess them and to manage and address them. And the last definition is the threat assessment team, and you see, um, in blue, there was a revision based on feedback from the first, uh, the work session of the first reading. Threat assessment team, the threat assessment team is a multidisciplinary team of school personnel that will be convened to identify, evaluate, and address threats or potential threats to school safety or security. The threat assessment team may consult with members of other governmental agencies, including law enforcement, if the severity of a particular threat warrants it. Recommended action is that the Board of Education approve this policy as presented.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do have one question. So I know that we've been using the see something, say something button to, uh, report threats, is that still the way that students could report those threats, or is there a different method?
It's absolutely the main way that we receive information, uh, but certainly we receive them in other fashions as well. Uh, sometimes they go directly to the sheriff's office, and they'll call us. Uh, the whole concept of a multidisciplinary team is alive and well here in St. Mary's County. We have a wonderful relationship. In fact, it's happened twice this week that we've received information directly from the sheriff's office. So, but the, uh, the see something, say something program and the big blue button, if you will, on the main page is absolutely, uh, working, very effective. We track and respond to those all the time, so.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
I have no questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Just gonna say that, that big blue button, um, uh, we need people to understand that, um, if they report through that, it comes to appropriate staff, um,
Twenty-four seven.
day or night, twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, so. It is a very, um, uh, active, constant button, so.
Yes, it is, yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve policy JHA as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Ms. Howell.
Good morning.
Five-year capital improvement program. Five-year CIP, what do you have?
So my cold from last week is still persisting, so.
All right, so we will not make you talk too much.
I will do my very, very best here to be loud.
We'll rely on the slides.
Um, so we are here, we've talked about our state capital improvements program, they have a little bit of an update today on that. But we're gonna talk today about our local projects, um, and the approval today, if granted, will then forward on to the Commissioners and start their work session process. So as part of our state CIP request, we have two projects that we submitted, which was for the completion of the funding for Green Holly's Elementary School, Switchgear and HVAC, and the first round of funding for Dynard's roof and HVAC. So we had a total request of five point three. Um, by Thanksgiving, we were supposed to have been notified what the seventy-five percent recommendation was. We have now received that. Um, my office will be, um, going to appeal, um, the recommendation tomorrow. Um, what we have received so far out of the five point three, we've received a recommendation for three million, seven hundred and five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Um, at ninety percent, we are not slated for any new, um, recommendations. They go ahead and lay out the whole hundred percent. At ninety percent, we are not slated for any additional funding. Um, what they're waiting on then would be the final allocation from the governor. We would not know until May, when they voted on the hundred percent. But at that point, they're looking for an additional nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars, which would take our total allocation this year to four million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand and twenty-nine dollars, um, leaving us, um, short of where we need to be. Um, the appeal that we're going to make is that these are systemic renovations. Multi-year funding, um, over multiple years beyond two really does not work. We cannot go into a third. We know that from Hollywood and Park Hall, what that does for us. Money will not be sufficient at the time of bid, so we're going to appeal, um, on that grounds. Um, we're also going to make a recommendation that they, um, look at the funding that we do receive because we found out that their formula is based on the new allocation of funds that we receive, not the total amount that we receive. So the four point six that they have been saying is our rolling ten-year average is really not what we've been getting over the ten years. Um, we've been getting closer to four point nine to five point two in total, but they're only counting it on the new money we receive. If they use PEGO or money from prior years that wasn't allocated, that is not included in the formula. So we're going to appeal that they consider that as well to try and get us the additional funding that we need. Um, we will hopefully know, um, that that's approved tomorrow, cause it is a, um, appeal, and then they're going to, to make their vote tomorrow, so we'll hopefully know very quickly. Um, we're gonna continue to advocate, um, for additional funding for our county. One thing we will, um, tell them is we, in the past, have been very helpful. We understand that other counties come in that are small that, um, don't have project funding the way we do, we're fortunate to have. And we have been able to try and trim a little off to make our cash flow work to assist another county. This year, we need that help. We're not able to help. We need to have that for us. We only have two projects, and we need to have them funded. So, um, we will be advocating for those tomorrow. In terms of our local capital improvements program, um, we've worked really closely, we always do, with Mr. Whitten, and this past summer, we've spent a lot of time talking with all the departments to try and make sure that our infrastructure and programmatic projects were taken into account. Um, with Ms. Lee, Lino taking over in design and construction, we're getting all of our pre-design studies, um, some of our current projects up to date. And we're really relying on those pre-design studies to help us narrow down on. And we're really relying on those pre-designed studies to help us narrow down on those budgets, especially for these roofs and HVACs, to understand truly what the scope needs to be. It allows us to have that, and it also gives us a cost estimate. So when we get the pre-designed study done, before we ask for the project from the state, we are going in armed with as much information as we possibly can. Then that has been, um, put in for all of our major projects, whether it's an HVAC roof or a modernization. We are doing pre-designed studies now. The projects within the building, infrastructure, and programmatic and critical line items are projects that are identified in the comprehensive maintenance plan. Um, Mr. Whitten and I spend a lot of time working on them, of which are gonna go into the operating budget and which are gonna come to the capital budget. And as I've shared before, we really have reduced the backlog of deferred projects to, down to about two years. And when we first started this process, they were about five to six years behind, so we're making great strides. And they're critical to making sure that we can keep our systems running while we're waiting for roof and HVAC projects in the future. I did, I know this is small, um, this is six years. We did try and condense it down, um, this year. So if you look at the critical and the programmatic line, you're gonna just see the total for them, you're not gonna see all the projects listed below. Um, we still have a very robust program of projects that we're trying to do to make sure that the investments and the projects that we built in the nineteen nineties are maintained and that we have good roofs and HVAC projects, so that's what you're going to see here. Um, we do have Green Holly and Diner, which are our first two priorities, followed, um, this year by Mechanicsville Modernization, which is a project, um, that we, we truly need to, to move on. Um, one of the things that we're gonna be monitoring as we go through with the state and part of the appeal will be, if we don't get the funding that we have, we have projects that are right behind these and we don't wanna get to a point where we have to defer a project. Um, so we have projects about, uh, um, every year, we have two that we're introducing. Um, we have coming up, we'll be adding Mechanicsville's Modernization, Town Creek's, um, HVAC renovation, systemic for the design study, Letty Marshall Dent's Modernization for their pre-designed study, and Great Mills, the first portion of Great Mills partial roof, um, pre-designed study. Um, then we have our Aging Schools Program, which we assume will continue, but we'll have to wait and see how that goes with the legislature. Uh, we have our relocatables that we're using to meet our capacity needs. Chopticon High School Soil Erosion, we've talked about this project, we have a plan, um, of how we're going to proceed, but we do need to address that. Um, we have our school capacity study, which we've been talking a lot about. Um, this is going to help us look towards how we can go towards in the future with a enrollment that has risen a little, but now is, is flat, but we still have a need. And as we discussed with the Commissioners, um, we do rely on those relocatables and they are aging. So we do need to look at how we're going to address that, um, based on the capacity that we currently have. We have our continuation of our safety and security project funding. And then the building, um, critical and programmatic, I'll talk about those, I have those as a separate slide. As we look forward to the future years, what you're going to see is the projects that we have pre-designed for Town Creek, Letty Dent, and Piney Point coming in, um, for either funding or their design study. We have, um, Green Holly's on the B side, their HVAC and roof, and a partial roof on, on the A portion of the building. Um, our, uh, the roof's stomach A and a partial B, uh, which is that bridge that connects the two. Piney Point's HVAC. And then we get to twenty twenty-four, which is the project that I am most, um, considering how we're going to fund in a multi, um, funding year, which would be the pre-designed for Chopticon's HVAC systemic renovation. Um, and then we have Green Holly's funding coming through. And then twenty twenty-five is the year that we would start the design for Chopticon. Um, and then followed behind for pre-designed studies for the next few projects, which are Ridge and Lexington Park. So you can see it's, we've usually got two in pre-designed and then two coming into construction, and we're trying to do that. It is going to be key that we are able to maintain our state funding level to keep the schedule moving forward.
I, I have a question, or I have a couple of questions on this side. By maintaining your state funding level, are you talking about the four point six that we're capped at right now? Okay, so, um, based on what the plan was last year for twenty through twenty-five and now twenty-one through twenty-six, what has shifted to the right because of that cap, if anything?
Right now, we have not, we, we kind of reworked, because we wanted to make sure that we got Mechanicsville in. So we've reworked some things, but nothing has shifted at this point.
Okay.
What potentially could happen is this. If we are not able to secure as much funding as we need for this year from the state for the two projects for Green Holly.
And does that mean the four point six or your, your appeal to the five point?
Right, if we get four point six, I always make sure that I ask for more cash flow, because I know this is going to happen.
Right.
So if we get the four point six, we will be fine next year.
Okay.
What happens with us next year is if you start adding that to the four point six, at some point, they're going to have to fully fund what we ask for.
Okay.
If not, you start shoving a million to a million and a half, and then two million off to the right, and then it gets to a point we're going to have to defer.
Okay.
I think the first time that we see that potentially going to happen would be, um, this time next year, when we're really looking at the twenty twenty-two and twenty-three budgets.
Okay.
I could see it happening in twenty twenty-three, being the year that we have to defer a project, because we don't have enough in twenty twenty-two to do everything we need to do.
Okay. To, with one more, so with the appeal that you have in order to get more money than what for, for twenty twenty-one that we've capped, right? So if we get that additional money, you said if we get the four point six, we'll be good. But if we get the appeal money on top of that, then we're even better, or what does that allow us to?
That, that pretty much assures us that twenty twenty-two is going to stay intact.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll have to wait and see this time next year, when we're talking twenty twenty-two, what happens to twenty twenty-three. Because if we're sitting here next year and we're at four point six and they've deferred money from this year to next year, we could be having a discussion of what twenty twenty-three looks like.
Five point three.
Now, when will you find out if you've, the appeal has been accepted, or?
So this is the concern that I have, because tomorrow, they're going to vote on the seventy-five percent recommendation. And I'm fairly assert sure that they're going to approve the three point seven that we have. We're not scheduled to get any money at ninety percent, which is in February. So we're not going to hear until May, when they approve the final budget, if we're getting this money. And that's part of the hardship that I'm going to share with them is, for us to start planning to build a project, and you're asking us to wait until May to let us know if we're getting the money, we need something at ninety percent. I understand that their challenge is they don't know what the legislature's going to approve for, for funding levels. And there's all kinds of bills out there, so there may be even more money, and getting the rest of it may not be an issue. But making sure that they're aware that when you defer a, a decision like that out until May, there is no way that we could then even conceivably start a project in July, if you don't know until May what you're getting.
Right.
And when you're talking a systemic that has money over two, two years, that's a very long time to wait.
Okay.
Um, when we get to, um, twenty twenty-five, we'll be having this discussion again, because that is a very large project. Um, and the, at that point, the new funding streams will, have been approved, and we may be looking at a different model of how budgets are done and what categories we fall into. So this is an ongoing discussion we're gonna have in the next couple of years as all of the work groups finish their work and the new funding sources are allocated and monies are put into those, and we know which category we're gonna fall into.
This is gonna be a great opportunity for us to be exceptionally vocal about our county in particular, as we have the governor saying he is going to put forth four billion dollars in the Building Opportunity Fund. We need to say that opportunity needs to land in St. Mary's County, as well as all of the other places that it's being cast about. It looks like a small piece of the pie, but the five point three million dollars is the number that we need to get to. And then we need to have recurring over the next several years, so that that becomes the new rolling average. Every year that they only fund ninety percent of our requests, then it diminishes the rolling average. Um, it's as though you could just kind of shave off a little bit each year, um, and.
Well, it's, it's the twofold, it's they're shaving the ninety percent down, and then they're only basing it on the allocation you get of new money.
Right.
Not of the total you get, so you're really starting to whittle this. And, um, Mr. Carell at the state would probably tell you that I am very vocal on this subject.
They know us, they know us.
So it, it really, I think, Mrs. Bailey, you talked in the beginning about the delegation. This, this is something that, you know, um, I think Mako and Maeve have done wonderful letters to outline as we go forward what this process looks like and the, and inherent problems that some of these proposals that they're making, based on no information, because at this point, the FCI hasn't even started. So they're making information and decisions on information they don't have. So I am very grateful that the work group decided to ask for a one-year extension, so that they could wait to see the ramifications of what they're talking, because some of them have very serious ramifications for rural counties.
Right, well, and, and, I mean, that's just my concern, because I mean, everyone's talking about Baltimore County doesn't have air conditioning, and, you know, Baltimore City doesn't have, you know, fresh running water in so many of their schools. And I'm not diminishing that fact, but then, for all of the school systems that have, that are where we are, that have taken care of it, and taking care of their facilities, it just, that, that, that's the message that is getting lost in, in the two big headlines, and that's. Right, and that's, that's just what I don't wanna have happen, because the impact then, while might be minimal now, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be exponential as we continue down through the next five years.
And, and it's very frustrating from my side of the house, because if you look at the IAC minutes, and I won't name particular counties, but when these projects are at this point in the time, allocated to certain counties, and then you see six, nine, ten months later, that they're giving the money back.
Right.
Because they're not able to fulfill the project, well, that's money that could have been used by another county. So it, there's a lot of moving targets to this that have to be addressed.
We, we will continue to be actively engaged in the conversation.
Yes, they're, they're very constructive and actively done.
Okay, sorry to hijack your slide, but it just, it kind of fit better, right there.
I, I can honestly tell you, in my thirty years of working for the school system, these have been the most challenging years of trying to understand. We've had program changes before, but the, the quantity of them and the pace that they're moving, um, they're very challenging to, to keep pace with. Um, so it did break the slide out, it's a little easier to see. Um, these projects are, are something that I am, I'm very proud of in our office, in our division, because they've really made some great strides in meeting the needs of our schools and making things better for us. But the infrastructure critical are those projects that are truly needed to make sure that we're maintaining our infrastructure to keep it running. These are things that could potentially break while we're looking at, um, for our HVAC or a roof. So in twenty twenty-one, we have Marka Brent's Water Feed, Letty Marshall Dent's Cooling Tower. We have Fields and Grounds, um, annual funding. We have the Leonard Town High School Auditorium seating. And then we have HVAC network controls at, um, numerous schools. Uh, when you start going out to future projects, we have plumbing, um, we have well pumps, we have cooling towers at several other schools, air handlers, um, generators, lift stations. So these are all the pieces that are truly gonna help us move forward. And if you look through there, you'll see projects like Chopticon's Cooling Tower. Um, those are pieces that we're going to continue to keep moving forward as we're waiting for that project to come, um, forward. They are of a magnitude that is larger than one Mr. Whitten is able to accommodate in his operating budget. In terms of the programmatic, these are the things that we have to maintain on a regular basis, such as PA systems, paving, and flooring. Um, so in twenty twenty-one, we have paving proposed for Great Mills High School and Green Moon Oles. Um, flooring at Green Moon Oles in Hollywood, Hollywood's is timed for the completion of their project. Um, PA systems and, um, playgrounds, and we'll be coming to you with some more information on where we are with the playgrounds. We're going to, to do a, um, summary of where we are and how that we're going to move forward with that funding in the future for replacement pieces. Um, when we start talking about these, the paving, if you're talking Great Mills High School, we're talking very large projects, and we start talking about repaving, so this is a, another source of funding that allows us to do what we need to do. Moving forward for the future years, we have flooring at Chopticon High School Esperanza, Leonard Town, and Piney Point. Um, paving at Chopticon, and then PA systems. And then moving down, it is a life cycle replacement of these, um, components. Um, if you look in twenty twenty-five, for instance, we have a locker room plumbing, um, at Chopticon High School. And then we have fire alarms as well. So we're really trying to hit on a systemic level in the comprehensive maintenance plan, all of this life cycle replacement of key components. So that is our local capital improvements program. Um, the action before you today is to approve the, um, six-year capital improvements program. It would then be forwarded on to the Commissioners, um, for their review. Um, and we would start into work sessions, um, with them in January and February. Um, I did wanna point out, at the joint meeting, there was talk about, a joint meeting, and, um, I just wanna make sure everyone is aware. I do sit, um, on the county CIP group, which is all of their department heads, um, and I meet with them several times a year. Um, we go through their projects, they go through ours, and there's a lot of collaboration back and forth on those. And in addition, the CIP group as a collective goes to the Planning Commission, and we present the program, um, as a whole, including ours, um, for their recommendation that it meets the, um, land use growth policies of the county. Um, and they get graded and a score given back to the Commissioner. So it is a very collaborative process. I will do whatever else they would like us to do, but I just wanna make sure everyone knew we're, we're actively engaging with them as it, as we stand. So I'll take any questions you may have.
I have no questions, thank you.
None, that's all, thanks.
Um, I'm just curious on the, um, on your projections, if you have contingencies built in to, to these numbers. For example, I think in two thousand and three, you, you got a partial replacement for the roof at Great Mills. If there was a failure before two thousand and three, is there, where would the funds come from? Would that be operational?
So if there was a failure of a system component before we were able to do this, it would fall on Mr. Whitten's operating budget, um, to, to address that. Or if it was something severe, what we have had, um, only once or twice to do is to go back to our project balances, go to the Commissioners, ask for funding from ours to be deferred back to another project. We have that as an option as well.
Thank you, that's all.
I answer my questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
I think one of the things that sometimes, um, uh, isn't touted as much is the, the work that you do with, um, Mrs. Cudmore and others, um, so that we're, we have an understanding of what their ability to fund, um, is. And I know you have, over the years, brought, um, said that you've made, had to, you've made adjustments um, so that there's a smoother cash flow, um, and, and we're not, you know, having peaks and valleys in, in our need for funding, um, so that it's something that the county can kind of program in from one year to the next. And I will, uh, once again, um, kind of fuss about the fact that I, I don't understand why the IAC no longer looks at anything beyond one year's worth of projects. Strategically, that, that makes no sense. Um, it's very difficult for them to understand, um, what needs may come about two or three years down the, the pike, um, so that they can make their current funding decisions um, with an eye toward that future of what they might have to do. So they might fund more in one year, um, of, you know, a variety of projects, um, so that, that, that would free up funding in another year for a, a large project.
And, and I kind of feel that's what happened this year. Um, when, we, we did get a call asking if we, there was anything we could do to help, because they got a request in from a county that historically does not submit, um, large projects. And that happens in that narrow, short-minded, one-year view, because if they had been looking at this last year, they would have known and they could have adjusted funding to, to account for that. Um, to that end, we put in our six-year CIP. We need them to understand what the magnitude of our plan is. Um, but it also makes that multi-year cash flow funding. I, as a planner, I really don't know how you can do multi-year funding if you don't look at the big picture. Um, and I do work with Mrs. Cudmore, and she and I have a lot of discussions about how that's gonna look. If we have something coming up, or I know that we need to update a budget, because something else has, has failed, or we need to add to it, she and I have that discussion, I don't just do that blindly and then not share that with her. At the state level, that right now is lacking, having that long-range vision.
It's very unfortunate and short-sighted in more ways than one.
Um, I, I guess the, the, the philosophy that's been shared with us is they know what they have this year, or the potential for this year. They don't know the future, so they're going to work with what they have, but.
It's hard to run a race when you're staring at your feet.
Mm-hmm, it is, very, very much is.
Yep. May I have a motion on that note?
I move that the Board of Education approve the FY twenty twenty-one, FY twenty twenty-six local capital improvements program for submission to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If you're opposed, motion is carried, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Howell, as always.
Thank you, I will let you know what the results are tomorrow.
That would be great, thank you. All right, Dr. Mar, Ms. Delhun.
Hello, how are you?
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, we are very glad to be back here with you again to, for our second reading and, um, your, your action on, um, policy ACA educational equity. And, um, since we first presented to you, we've done a lot of work. We have met with the, continued to meet with the Equity Task Force. Um, as Nagina and, and Dr. Smith shared, uh, earlier, we did actually talk to the Slack about the policy and, um, shared it with them, they were, they were very supportive of it and, and were very interested in the future work and the implementation of the policy as well. And, um, I know Adrian has some other words to share about, uh, but, but it has been warmly received out in the, in the, the community and the feedback we've received. Um, in addition to, uh, one person at public comment, we also received one, uh, person who, uh, sent, um, something in writing to us in support of the policy and, uh, really, um, in, in, in support of not just the policy, but the definitions, which I'll talk about in just a minute too, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to, um, echo, um, Dr. Mar's, um, words.
Yeah, I'd just like to, um, echo, um, Dr. Marr's, um, words. We, um, were able to present, I was able to present to the Slack, and we talked about that earlier, um, on equity, the difference between equity and equality. And they did an activity, um, based around that. And again, as Dr. Marr said, um, very vocal about, um, their, um, approval of the policy and wanting to be a continuing part of the educational equity work that we are doing. And, um, yesterday, um, we had our, uh, meeting with the Equity Task Force, and again, um, we continued the work. Our focus yesterday was about educational equity in the sense of looking at it through the equity lens. So they were able to do a couple of scenarios and looking at items through an equity lens, which was very beneficial. And we also have been able to expand our group to now include the Citizens Advisory Council for Special Education, Partners for Success, Saint Mary's Library, and Decoding Dyslexia, to name a few. So we thank you again for your suggestions, your guidance, and your support.
Uh, in addition to, um, before we, we go through the second reading too, yesterday I had an opportunity to go to a, a, a state meeting where they shared the, um, Educational Equity Guidebook that accompanies the COMAR regulations too. And so with that, it's given us some tools to take back to work with schools administrators as well as the Equity Task Force moving forward. Um, so with that, um, the, the, the changes to the policy since our last presentation are minor. Um, they do reflect the changes moving from, uh, future tense to present tense in, uh, throughout the policy. And that's really what the, the changes you'll see both in the purpose and the policy statement as well. Um, the major discussion from the last, um, uh, presentation was in looking at the definitions. And, um, when we went back, um, per, per your suggestion to go back and talk to council as well as look at, um, how, uh, getting the feedback from the other groups, um, if the, 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 this definitions are defined at a higher level, if they're defined in COMAR, um, it would be redundant for us to have them here. So what we've done as, uh, i- in that direction is to take the definitions out because they are already defined, um, at a higher level. That also allows for, if the state were to change a definition, we don't have to then come back and make changes to our policy to reflect whatever changes are made at that higher level, uh, to which we're accountable anyway. Uh, so with that, we're presenting this policy for your approval.
Yeah, I think it was a really good opportunity to have the equity policy being shown to the Slack students. And they did approve of the policy and wanted to continue their work, um, throughout. Um, so just out of curiosity, what is the definition of equity defined in COMAR? Cause I know a lot of students had questions about the definitions.
I'm glad you asked. Give me one second, I'll pull it up here. Alright, so, um, it is the process of ensuring every student has access to opportunities, resources, and educational rigor they need throughout their edu- educational career to maximize academic success and social, emotional well-being, and to view each student's individual characteristics as valuable.
I think it would be really good to like share, um, that definition along with other definitions with the Slack students so they can see the policy statement again, see the definitions, and kind of put it in place in their mind so that as they continue to work with you guys, they have that, um, information.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's great suggestion.
We'll include, I think we can include that as an ongoing agenda item on the Slack meetings as well, so they can see the work going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much for including a more diverse group of people in your, uh, conversations. I really appreciate that. I think you're gonna get a lot better feedback for, for, you know, what, you know, how to move forward. So, and like I said, you know, having the students involved, that is fantastic. Thank you. Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you.
I have any questions? Thank you.
The only thing I would suggest is in definitions, definitions as defined in COMAR, could you cite the COMAR law from which the definitions come?
Yes.
So it would be easier for the citizens or students to look up those definitions? So COMAR, what is the number?
Uh, thirteen A oh six, um, and some other numbers.
We'll all know it.
So, um.
Thirteen A oh one oh six, yeah, and then it goes down to.
So Mrs. Washington, to that point, when this gets posted in board docs and policies, it will have the cross-reference to that COMAR specifically. So that, which will go directly back to that.
Um, just a couple of things on the policy itself. In the, um, under the policy statement, the first paragraph, um, the last line in the first paragraph currently says priority, priority is be given. So I think we need to strike the B.
One second, yeah. Y- and, and yes, and that, it's correct here, it's not correct that we will.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I'm, and then the other one is, um, in the last paragraph in that, um, it says the board and all staff works together.
There should not be the S there, correct.
Okay, thank you.
I will make those, we will make those two changes.
I, I appreciate it. Um, but I do appreciate the work that you've put into this, um, and, uh, the, um, I think having that, uh, definitions as defined in COMAR and having that as an active link, um, will make it very easy for people to just pop over. And I like the idea that since it is in COMAR, um, and can be changed by the state board at any time, um, it does make the most sense, since this policy came about as a, a result of d- direction through COMAR. Um, that, uh, to have that be a more active, um, piece is, is, I think, the better way to go. So, thank you. Thank you.
All right, with that, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve policy ACA educational equity as presented and discussed.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Marr, I just.
For, um, for this presentation, I'd like to invite Dr. Abel from the College of Southern Maryland to join me here because really what we're going to share with you is some work that we're doing collaboratively, um, to move, um, this idea forward. And, um, as has been presented to you in the past, we, um, are fortunate to have a very rich partnership with the College of Southern Maryland that we've enjoyed for quite some time, that our, our students have, have gained a, a great benefit from. Through this, as we've shared before, dual enrollment, um, programs for our students have provided students an opportunity to earn college credit, uh, while they're in high school, to engage early in the college experience, um, have college courses that appear in their college transcript, and take those credits with them when they go to college. In addition, our students enjoy a reduced tuition cost, and our students who, who receive free and reduced meals pay no tuition costs. Um, with that, uh, what we're gonna be sharing with you now is an idea that has been percolating for, um, about a decade now. And so we're, we're, we're very fortunate in the experiences that, um, both Dr. Abel and Dr. Murphy have had in doing similar programs in other states, um, to be able to move this idea forward. And that idea is to provide an opportunity for first-generation college students to successfully complete college coursework during their high school years, and more specifically, to create a cohort of students, uh, from ninth through twelve, who will be able to graduate not only with their high school diploma, with their associate's degree as well after four years. Um, now, I will say that we have had, in the past, we've had students who have done this. They have navigated this process on their own, and they have walked across the stage at the College of Southern Maryland and then, uh, met us down at Saint Mary's College and gotten their high school diploma. Um, what this would be is, is a specific pathway designed to, um, help, uh, do a structured program that would get students through that pathway, and with a, a very specific focus on providing that opportunity for students who, who, um, might be economically disadvantaged, or from families who have not, um, had that opportunity thus far. So this proposed plan would be, uh, using this next year or so as a planning year to get all the details ironed out. We have a pretty good sketch of what it'll look like, but there's, as, um, as we'll share with you, there's some details that we really need to make sure we hone, um, and that we work through the processes for making sure that the supports are in place for students and the pathway is clear for them. It would be a grade nine through twelve pathway, um, beginning in twenty-one, twenty-two. Student wi- starting with a ninth-grade cohort of approximately twenty-five students. That would include students from each of our home high schools, about eight, eight or nine per high school, um, that would, would, uh, follow through this with, this pathway, pathway. The, an example schedule would look like this. Um, our first priority is to make sure that they receive their twenty-one high school credits that they need for graduation. So that would mean that we build in those core classes first. So a ninth grader would take their four core classes at their home high school. That would be English nine and geometry, or, or another math, for example, um, US history, earth and space science, uh, those four core classes. They then would, uh, get on the existing Forest Center buses, um, that pick up at our high schools, take them to CSM, uh, and then, uh, take their class there. In this example, they would take a music appreciation and a Spanish class first semester. Um, that would be a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday schedule, and I'll talk about Fridays in just a minute. And, uh, then hop back on the bus and go back to their home high school so they can be there in time for their after-school activities, sports, or, uh, one other programs that they have. Uh, we have in here also a design that would include a winter room semester option because the College of Southern Maryland ends, uh, in mid-December for their semester and picks up at the end of January. So having a course that the students can participate in there as a winter room, um, semester, that may be an elective, or it may be some other course in the program, um, that we, we designed for them. Um, this would allow, in this example, allow for them to, uh, start earning those CSM courses that they need, uh, for their gen, uh, gen ed studies, uh, credits, as well as, in this case, uh, of the, the fine arts credit, as well as a world language credit for them as well. Tenth grade would look similar in the fact that they would have core classes and then, uh, attend over at CSM for additional classes. These classes are not necessarily the scope and sequence. That's one of the reasons why we need a year to plan, cause we need to look at specific. You'll notice on the, uh, left column there, it has an asterisk next to world history and a science class. That's because there are specific requirements that Maryland has to earn those credits in those classes. And so if we can get the courses to align with the Maryland outcomes, then they may be able to be taken as CSM courses. If not, then they'll have to be at our, um, campus to earn those credits as well. So, uh, this would be a map out of their schedule so that they can earn all the credits for us, as well as for the College of Southern Maryland, to finish out on time. Um, some additional things, I talk about Fridays, because typically, uh, the college schedule may be a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, and that leaves Friday. So that would allow for a structured class that would be designed for these students, particularly a seminar on college success strategies, as well as tutoring for those classes, or other supports that may need to be in place to help them to be successful, because we are talking about ninth graders, fourteen, fifteen-year-olds, who, um, are gonna be stepping into this world. Um, counseling and support needs to be, um, assured, and, and planning what that looks like from both the CSM side, as well as the Saint Mary's County Schools side on our campus, as well as theirs. And then working out the details about what parent communication looks like. Um, how does that, uh, not only, how do we communicate about the program, but also communicate with parents along the way while their students are at these, i- in these courses. We still have, um, some planning to do in turn determining criteria for selection. For example, that may include things like grades, or middle school coursework, and other assessments, but, but those really need to be worked out. And, and we're, like I said, we're fortunate in that Dr. Abel and Dr. Murphy have used, have done similar programs, um, i- in other states and have had some success with what these criteria look like. Uh, so our timeline, um, and then I will, um, I'll take a pause so that Dr. Abel can share some words and you, and we can have questions as well. But, um, through this year, looking at, um, implementing an MOU, um, that puts this down in paper with the College of Southern Maryland, we've been drafting what that looks like now, establishing the criteria so that we can start going out and talking to, um, our current seventh-grade students who may be, um, perfect, uh, a- applicants for this program. Um, we also need to look at challenges and program supports, looking at brainstorming all of the things that may come up that we, we need to, to address along the way. That would mean next year, we publicize the criteria and promote, um, parent and student, student communication opportunities, making sure that the coursework is aligned and working through, um, Mrs. Bachner's office and, uh, the program studies process as we go through next year. If there's any changes that have to, uh, be done, so that we're ready in twenty-one, twenty-two for implementation. And, so I've talked a lot, and so I.
I just want to reiterate what Dr. Marr said, and, and first of all, the, the partnership is outstanding. And, and, um, what I like about this timeline is that it does allow us the opportunity to work out what we think might be some of the bugs. Cause as you know, this is never easy. It's not easy talking to the community, it's not assuring, and it's not easy to, uh, assure people, um, the, I don't want to say value of the program, so I think people all understand that, but the costs, the nuances. And, um, so what Dr. Marr and I have also done is to start identifying what some of the concerns are and putting people in place and teams together to work through some of those things. So for example, um, for a student who's taking a class that is part of a high school requirement, but that also meets the college requirements, so a dual-enrolled class, um, what does that mean in terms of supports for students with disabilities? Because colleges, as you know, have very different structures and requirements for meeting the disability needs than, than, uh, the public school systems. So what are best practices out there? How do people put those particular things in place? New Jersey actually had a fairly structured, which is where I had done my, my two academies, they had a fairly structured statewide system for understanding that. Um, but we don't have a system here, and so there's a, um, a different way of, of looking at that. Um, but key is getting students, um, who are academically motivated. I'm not, and I say motivated, not necessarily prepared, because what we know about students is that if they have motivation and are at this level of academic preparation, they're gonna perform better than students who are highly academic prepared, prepared, who have no motivation. So my experience is in the academy that we had, is that we have students who say, yes, this is what I want, I'm gonna be dedicated. And it's, it's their choice, it's not their parents' choice. Because what you don't want is to have students who are in these programs whose parents say, you have to do this, you have no choice. So it does take a lot of education, it takes a lot of community, community support. Uh, and again, I think that, um, the timeline that we have built into this gives us the opportunity to do this in a very structured and a very deliberate process, and ensure that we, um, meet the needs of the community and that we serve the students who are gonna be coming into this. My particular delight in this program is knowing that if we work with first-generation students, that we have the opportunity to impact families, um, in ways that, just going through high school and then going to college down, I mean, both in terms of finance and an opportunity for them. So, um, happy to answer any questions that you all may have, um, about the program.
I do have one question. So, um, generally, high school students, sorry, like, I'm a little sick, that's why my voice sounds like this. But, um, generally, high school students take seven classes, um, in, or seven periods of classes. So would that still be the case? Would they be taking the seven classes, or would there be six because of the transportation time?
So they, they would be taking fewer, um, classes. However, they will still have the number required to earn the high school diploma. So typically, you're right, there's a seven-period day, a student may graduate with twenty-eight credits, um, because of additional electives or program requirements that they may be in. Um, uh, this, uh, addresses that, that specific need of the twenty-one credits, um, particularly for the USM, University System of Maryland requirement. So it has the world language and, um, the technology credit embedded in here. Um, so, uh, they're gonna, they're, they will earn more than those twenty-one through this program, as you can see, because they, where they will have six, it's gonna be a Monday, Wednesday class versus Tuesday, Thursday. They may even have more, because if they have, um, a winter room semester, or if they, if any of them take a summer class, for example, that could be transcribed, there might be more as well.
Thank you.
Um, you said, okay, so let's say if this music is, and the Spanish is Monday, Wednesday, and then you have the, uh, what is it, the other, uh, that other, the other.
Like the Friday seminar?
Yeah, the Friday seminar, I couldn't think of what you called that on here. So Tuesday, Thursday is what?
So for example, and we have not, the classes have not actually been scheduled. But let's say we were to take, for example, that music class, and the music class was offered Monday, Wednesday, and then the, the Spanish class were offered Tuesday, Thursday. So that fills out your Monday through Thursday. The Friday seminar would complete the week for the student during that time block. And each class would be about an hour and twenty minutes, um, so it's longer than a traditional high school class. Um, but if, it's, by only having that one during that day, they have the time to hop on the Forest Center bus, get there, complete the class, and return to school by the end of the day. And they have the first block of lunch that they can, uh, get lunch at their high school as well.
So that particular kind of schedule would be only for the first year. So their senior year, the students would be almost exclusively at CSM. With the exception, if they were involved in activities at their home high school.
Uh, the other thing too is, I know that you are gonna be pulling from all the different.
The other thing too is, I know that you are going to be pulling from all the different high schools. Is there, are you thinking about putting, like, say, all twenty-five students, even though they might be from Great Grills, Chopticon, all, like, say, maybe at Leonardtown, so that they're taking English together, geometry, and then they're getting on the bus together? Because you know that the buses are going to be dropping people off at different times coming through.
So, the current design would be that they would stay at their home high school and take those four core classes there. And because the route that the Forest Center bus comes, there are actually, that schedule is pretty tight for when they arrive in Leonardtown area. So, they should all arrive within a five, ten-minute span of each other.
Okay. And this elective, would they be also riding the bus during that time to get there?
Yes, the purpose of that winter room semester would be so that they maintain that schedule, and they don't have a hole in their schedule in the afternoons in January. Because essentially, what would happen is if the, if we don't have a structured class for them to go to, they would end their day at twelve-thirty.
Right.
And have this emptiness in their schedule for a little while. This would allow for a continuation of a program. And that course itself is still yet to be determined, but it might be something outside of a typical scope and sequence, but more designed for them, for example.
So, one of the things, when we were early planning this, we actually started with the possibility of six different majors. We were looking at nursing, we were looking at cyber, you know, is this something that we wanted to track in from one of the CTE pathways? Or is this something we want to do to meet, you know, high demand for employment in the area? But really, what we kept coming down to was the opportunity of completing the general studies, essentially known as the liberal arts degree, because it allows the maximum opportunity for students to put in some elective so that they can major in things that they want to. It is designed to be a transfer pathway, it is not an employment pathway. But what those electives can do is for students who are interested in doing some exploration, if they're interested in taking a class, again, that is very specific to their major, that those interim classes with the opportunity for them to take those. So, again, not all of the students might be taking the exact same class in that winter elective, but it does give them a little bit of flexibility. And again, keeps them on the schedule and keeps them on track.
And I will say too, in, as Dr. Abel said, this transfer, with this design as a general studies, the entire degree transfers as a block to any Maryland institution, and many outside of Maryland who accept the AA degree outside of. And so, students are really coming into this program and being able to walk out with a tremendous opportunity to be ahead of the game, and really, not just for themselves, but for their families, to get this, that step forward into higher education beyond our eight school walls.
And just to piggyback that, we actually just signed our hundredth articulation agreement, which is guaranteed transfer student finishes their associate's degree. So, there are so many opportunities, both, you know, again, in the state, as well as out of the state. We've also just signed our second international program. We have the American School of Business in Paris. We also have Swansea University in Wales. So, students have lots of opportunities after they leave our doors.
I would just kind of echo what you're saying. My experience from my own family, I have a daughter and granddaughter that went through the two-year associate's program, and they were able to get into very good schools that they may not have gotten into at a freshman level. So, I don't know if you could use that as a sales tool, but I think that probably can happen. Because there's just not much demand when going in your third year. They have more openings in these big universities.
Thank you for saying that. So, one of the things, actually, so I'm on the statewide transfer advisory group for Maryland Higher Education Commission. And one of the things that we're working on right now is to try to make space for students who are finishing the associate's degree at the same time they're finishing high school. Because if they're brought in just as a transfer student, as most people who finish an AA or an ASR, they're generally not eligible for housing at the university, which isn't fair, right? That disadvantages those particular kinds of students. So, we're talking about bringing these students in with advanced standing, so they also would be eligible to participate in first-year student, first-year-on-campus student housing and opportunities. So, you're right. So, we know students who come out of these programs are high achievers. The two programs that we were running, that I was running in New Jersey, one was pre-professional health, and the other was the liberal arts program. We had a ninety-eight percent retention rate in both of those programs, and they got into some really outstanding schools and performed really well.
I think Montgomery County has a program very similar to this. So, I mean, and they've had it for several years. So, I think the whole working out of, making sure that the Maryland high school graduation requirements have met, is probably the, you know, the minimal lift and a lot of this. I know Dr. Murphy's very excited about this, she's talked to me about it several times. So, it's, so, she's, I think when you have the commitment, both from your side and from our side, I think it will just ensure to be a success. You know, my, I think having a personal contact with the students and parents as they go through this program, because, I mean, we, I've said this up here before, we all sit and we all talk in these acronyms, and we all talk in the world in which we live. And some of these students and their parents have not even set foot in this world yet. So, that's going to probably be the biggest challenge, is to get them comfortable and, you know, encourage them to ask questions, and, you know, and understand what this opportunity is.
I'm very appreciative of the partnership we have with CSM. They're one of our great partners, and many of our students transfer to CSM. And I go to the commencement when I can, because many of those students who are graduating and moving on to the next level are our students. So, I appreciate the program. You have a great schedule here, and the seminars, the counseling and support, the parent communication will be essential to the success of the students. And I hope we have a high rate, ninety-eight percent. And I think that we will, because we have exceptional students here, and educators who encourage and push our students to their maximum potential. So, I see this as a wonderful program and one of our pathways. You know, we have GIS, finance, we have all of these. But this is one college pathway for students. So, this has been on my mind for years. I know Ms. Allen has talked about it for years. And finally, we see it, and I think it's going to be a great program. And it'd be wonderful for our students. Thank you so much.
I went to a National School Board Association conference years ago, about ten years ago. And that's where I saw this. There was a presentation by a school system in Texas. And I was thrilled with it, and came back and really touted, and had hoped that we would be able to do this. I'm sorry it's taking us ten years, but I am glad that we are on this path. The fact that we have a lot of these elements already in place means that I would think that the cost to the system would be relatively minor. And to be able to do this is a huge return on our investment, I believe. So, as you work through all of the challenges, I hope that you will bring this back to us with that work done, and so we can really have an even better understanding of what this will completely look like.
We are planning on putting together a handbook, guidebook, policy handbook for, you know, both internal and external groups.
That's super. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Abel, for joining us today.
My pleasure.
Patiently sitting through our CIP and all of our...
Always interesting.
Yes, Dr. Mark, can you make sure that Dr. Montgomery and Dr. Jaffers' twenty-six slide PowerPoint presentation is appropriately loaded? Down from forty-four.
I was going to say, no, no, I think we started closer to fifty. Maybe you jumped in at forty-four.
This is Dr. Jaffers' slim line version.
This morning, he told me he added fifteen more, but I checked just to make sure that they weren't there. So, yeah.
Snuck in some of those MSDE ones, so.
Dr. Jaffers wants everybody to be fully in.
So, we have been here before to talk to you about the ESSA report card and the STAR rating. So, we did a board of ed presentation last year and went through the components of the ESSA report card in quite a bit of detail. So, what we did, for anybody that's interested, is we loaded the detailed information about the elements that we're not going to go into too much depth on today into board docs, for anybody that wants to take a look at them, and we're certainly available for questions. So, today, we're going to talk about some of the newer components that were added to the ESSA report card. And the three new things that we talked about last year, but we didn't have that data reflected in our ESSA data last year, was the climate survey. So, we took the climate survey last school year, every school participated. And also the MISA, the MISA, the science assessment, that's been added. So, fifth grade and eighth grade has their science assessment data added. And we also get to kind of take a look at the report card from an improvement perspective of where schools were last year versus this year, because now we have year two, two years' worth of the report card.
Okay, so, on the accountability side, excuse me, we have available on mdreportcard.org, we have the awarded stars by school, we have the percentile rank, and we have the total earned points percent. And again, that's for, on the public side, that's a public-facing document for everybody to see on every one of our schools. Also included in this is the disaggregated information with regards to accountability. We have, there's about seven or eight different disaggregated groups, and we quantify that if we have an end size or sample size of ten students over two consecutive years. So, that's the idea. So, all this equity information's been calculated, including gaps, done automatically for the public, just to see how our demographic is doing against the aggregate. We see progress towards meeting targets such as AMOs. And again, as Maureen said, it's the improvement from the prior year. And I think the new measures that we've included, like the school survey and the MISA, we're going to use this year as a baseline. So, next year, we'll be able to have some context with which to judge and appraise our performance for this upcoming school year.
And just remind everyone, the school survey is not one we have created.
That's correct.
It's one that MSDE has created.
MSDE-created survey.
That's correct.
You go ahead.
Okay, so, well, we have basically the elementary and the middle and high have, everything's, when it's all fully flushed out, it'll be out of a hundred points. Middle schools are the only sort of school level that won't have a hundred points, because we don't have the social studies achievement assessment test that will be administered this spring. So, we'll have that date in the fall. And again, some schools may have less than a hundred if they don't have an ELL population of ten or more students over two consecutive years.
And on that point, does that also mean, so say it's a high school, and they have the maximum possible of a hundred points, but they don't have any ELL students, does that mean then that whatever that point total for ELL would be is taken out of there? So, instead, we'll just say it's their score out of ninety points, not maximum, not a hundred?
Take it out of the numerator and denominator.
The denominator's out of ninety as opposed to a hundred.
Right, okay. That makes sense, all right.
So, we really have four big domains here. We have the academic achievement, the growth, and again, this is the level, elementary school, middle school. We have the credit for the completion of a well-rounded curriculum. And those top three elements constitute, with the ELP performance, constitute sixty-five percent of the metric for a report card, the STARs reporting. The thirty-five percent is the last element, which is the school quality and student success. And those components are, you know, they include such metrics as the percent of students not chronically absent, the school survey results, as well as the percent of students with access to a well-rounded curriculum. So, again, as what we can see here is, we have schools being evaluated not on just one testing metric like we used to have, like on MSA, or HSA, or MCAP. We now have a much more holistic sort of evaluation tool with which to judge performance of schools. For the high school, the big difference is in the growth. We don't see the growth from one year to the next. What we do have are two different elements. We have the graduation rate and the readiness for post-secondary performance. And again, the top four elements of academic achievement, graduation rate, ELP, performance, proficiency, and readiness for post-secondary constitute sixty-five percent of the high school allocation of points. The bottom thirty-five percent include the school quality slash student success.
Okay, so, we were, this is the state data, the distribution of stars across all of the districts. And we were one of twelve districts that had no ones or twos. None of our schools were ones of twos, and that was twelve districts across the state. Overall, we fared pretty well. We had eighty-nine percent of our schools are fours and fives. So, eighty-nine percent total of our schools. And not that we're competitive or anything else like that, but Calvert had eighty-six percent of their schools, and Charles had fifty-three percent of their schools, or something, fifty-one percent of their schools. Montgomery County had sixty-eight percent of their schools, and Howard County fared with eighty-one percent of their schools. So, we were pretty pleased to have that large percentage. There were one or two school districts that had a higher percentage than ours, but we were definitely a high-performing district with respect to this report card data. So, there were six schools that were fives this year, and last year, we had five schools. So, an additional school was added to the list in terms of the overall count. So, any questions about that?
So, what we have here is we've tried to bundle our elementary schools by region, if you will. The color metric is my own creation, it's from the previous slide. So, maybe I'll have to change that in the years going forward. But we have each school up here in the northern end in elementary. You can see the description of each element and the amount of point allocation per school per description. Be advised that raw data has driven these point allocations accordingly. The schools have in their possession all the raw data with which to make very operational and actionable decisions. We're excited about that, and as you can see, the two purple constitute the five-star schools. We had no schools in the north with any ELL population. So, again, to Ms. Allen's point, we don't, that denominator would be out of ninety as opposed to a hundred.
That's the gray-out area. And we're going to talk a little bit about attendance as we move through here, and then Dr. Smith might have some words to add about attendance. Because if you'll notice here, in the north, attendance, the percentage of points that these schools are getting. The point that I want to make as we go through the elementary ratings, and then as you get to the middle and high school, is just how important attendance matters. Because, of course, we've always known that. But looking at this data, some of the things that are differentiating a school from a four to a five, or from a three to a four, is directly correlated to the attendance score that they're getting. And then, of course, we know that when you don't have kids coming to school, it's going to affect their academic performance. It's going to affect their proficiency, it's going to affect their growth. So, attendance absolutely correlates with that. And I know Ms. Long would be very happy for me to make that point and to look directly into the camera and speak to parents, saying, we need to have your kids at school every day, no matter what, unless they're sick.
And before we get off this slide, I think it is important to understand, you know, the context of my previous comments. Every one of these descriptions, we have a breakdown from MSD of the raw data for each disaggregated cohort if we have ten or more students. So, we really have very actionable data. We can almost get down to that particular small sample size where we can really move and sort of direct repurpose resources accordingly for groups of students that may not be successful. So, we can see which students aren't coming to school, we can see which students aren't growing, we can see which students aren't proficient by demographic. So, it's very, this is the first time we've had this sort of lens and detail data with which to make decisions.
And back, just go back to the first one there. So, the reason why Dr. Montgomery referenced that I might have something to say about chronically absent students, is that all of those schools and that feed Chopticon around the northern part of the county, they have an average daily attendance rate of ninety-four percent or better. So, ninety-four percent or better of all those schools, children come to school every single day. But MSD did not use the actual attendance percentage or anything like this to use. They use chronically absent, and they define chronically absent students as any student who is absent ten percent of the days in which they are enrolled. And that's regardless of the reason, regardless of the circumstance. And then, they took a look at the distribution of points, and even though we have over ninety-four percent of our kids attending every single day, we only got, every one of those schools only got eleven-point-five out of an available fifteen points. So, even though you have a ninety-four percent average daily attendance, you only got seventy-six... point six percent of the available points. At the end of this, we're going to get down and hash out every single one of the numbers and all this, and whether it's a percent or a percentile, or whether it's quartiles or however it's done, but the, the, the data is a bit massaged to get where they, what they, what they want. And I wish that they would have just played true with some of the numbers, and attendance is one of them. And chronic absenteeism is a, is a, is a real, is a real challenge. It's, it basically says that we don't care why your child is absent. If you're absent more than ten percent of the time, you will have that label of chronic absentee, um, chronically absent regardless. And I know that there's been some conversation, um, amongst parents about that, because in the first sixty-some days of school, if you had a child who was really ill and out for a little more than a week, um, they're now labeled as chronically absent under this, under this system, so, um, I'm not going to say anything later on about it.
Okay, well, we were giving you, we'll give you multiple opportunities.
I just wanted to say, to demonstrate with this, where we have, you know, these are four and five-star schools where our kids have an average daily attendance rate of ninety-four percent or better, but they only receive seventy-six percent of the points because of the way they calculate chronically absent children.
Kind of like MCAP, you're only successful if you have an A or a B.
Right, Cs don't count.
Yeah, Cs don't count.
Cs don't count.
So here's, here's my thought on it. So they don't take into consideration any of the school system's efforts in order to, um, communicate the need for a student to be present in the classroom, correct?
No.
So the only, I mean, unless you actually go and find the child in their home and put them in the seat in school, a lot of that is, is not, we, I mean, we can do as much as we can, but a lot of it is on the parents. Also, for those who say, "Oh, you know, you're tired, just staying from school today" versus "You have strep throat, you can't go to school today." So that, that's not taken into consideration either, because it's, it, a lot of it is a parent thought process, too.
Especially at the elementary level.
Correct.
A child can't, yeah, a six-year, a six-year-old can't decide that, you know, that they're going to stay home from school unless the parent, in some way, is working with them.
Right, and I think, for, for purposes of transparency, I, I need to say this as a, as being completely objectionable, um, or I should say not objectionable, but objective.
Objectionable.
Um, the reason why the state does that is because most students do come to school.
Right.
So they want to nuance, because most of those students do come to school, most of our students across the state come to school, they want to sort of nuance, again, our, our, um, our absenteeism against other school systems, school districts, school, schools in particular, so it's a nuanced calculation. So, because, uh, we don't have a normal distribution of absences, right? Not, you don't have twenty percent of the students not coming to school, twenty percent of the students coming to school, we have six percent of our students don't come to school, so they want to nuance the upper echelon into, um, point allocation. So that's, that's why, as Dr. Smith said, the point allocation's somewhat misleading, and we have to go back to our raw data to, to really drive our action, um, in the schools, so.
But they've painted that with a very broad brush, that, you know, we always talk about, um, preaching each individual child where they are and bringing them where they need to be, this, in, in some fashion ignores that. Um, and, and I think that's where the, I have trouble with this. Um, I, I understand the whole idea of nuanced and, and making sure that, that there's comparables that you can, you can make judgments across the state, but at the same time, I still believe it should be local.
Well, it's almost as if they've said, "Well, you know what, you local school systems, you're not taking enough, you're not putting enough effort forth on this, so therefore, we're going to penalize you on your points and make it so difficult for you that, you know, in order to, for you to increase your efforts."
Well, it, it's not giving us credit for what we're doing.
Correct, that's what I mean.
If ninety-four percent of all the kids come to school every single day, then that's what you should get credit for. You shouldn't get, you shouldn't have it parsed out for the six percent who don't. Um, it's the same thing where they're going to shorten the algebra test, and they're going to shorten the algebra test by taking the items that everybody gets right and taking, and taking them out.
That's what they're doing.
So then it's a shorter test, but it's like, well, but wait a second, everybody got those right, they're aligned to a standard, everybody has to demonstrate that. You're just taking out the items that, you're only leaving the items that's, that trip up people. It's, um, it's, uh, it's, it's, and then, and then you're ultimately, somebody stands up and goes, "Well, why do you only have twenty percent of your kids passing something?" It's like, "Well, because you took out all the other parts and you only left the very difficult things, and so there you are." So somebody looking at this, especially when we get into our title schools, they're going to see that some of our schools only received, you know, thirty percent or forty percent of the overall points. And yet, if you look at the average attendance at those schools, there's still more than ninety percent of kids showing up every single day. But there are chronically absent children for a whole host of reasons, and there's not a real way for you to get out of that hole.
For our students who are on, um, home and health?
Chronically absent.
Chronically absent.
Unless they, unless they are in a program where we have moved them to home and hospital, but usually before we've moved them, they have demonstrated inconsistent attendance and a health concern such that they have accumulated enough absences to be considered chronically absent. I mean, at the, at the, at the end of the day, we're, you know, they, they've given us a five-star rating, so you have F schools, D schools, C schools, B schools, and A schools, and they've got an overall percentage at the bottom where, you know, you've got sixty-one percent and you're a four-star school, and somebody's going to then say, "What kind of grade inflation is that? You've got sixty-one percent and you're a four-star school, that's what's wrong with public education." And in fact, actually, one of the state board members said something very similar right after this was presented, that you, you have too many schools being four-star schools, so obviously the evaluation and the rating system isn't appropriate.
You know, what, what comes out, uh, to me is the percentage on academic achievements, only thirty percent on the high school and, and the rating, and I would think that, that that element would be higher than, you know, than just thirty percent.
For the, for the high, for the high school, the, it's, it is only thirty percent, but that's based on one math test and one English test, and you shouldn't, you're in school for four years and thirty percent of, yeah, sorry, sorry, English and math.
Whoops.
You know, so, so if I'm going to look at Ms. Ori, and I'm going to say, "I'm going to evaluate your four years in high school based on the one day you took a tenth-grade English test and the one day you took an algebra test, and you probably took the algebra test when you were in middle school," wow, that's probably not the best way. But I will look at whether you graduate in three years or four years or five years. I am going to look at whether or not you, you have been on track all the way through. I am going to look at, you know, whether you've been chronically absent and all those other elements.
Yeah, and if I could, part of the, part of the business rules for the high school is, um, they do include, if you do complete middle school Algebra I, they look at the SAT performance, so, and again, they look at that by cohort. So by the time the kids reach twelfth-grade status, that's how, it's sort of a, again, a, a, a revamping of how we would, uh, would evaluate. It's not a tenth grade, sort of at the end of their twelfth-grade experience, high school experience, have they crossed that metric or not, have they crossed that threshold or not? So again, that's why the point allocation can be sometimes, uh, as, as Dr. Smith said, a little bit misleading, because maybe our performances are a little higher. I mean, we may get thirty percent of the points, but maybe our proficiency is, is a bit higher based on the metric or the calculation.
But, but what we do appreciate is that we have actionable data. So although the, the state is going to focus on our report card, on giving us, you know, not giving us credit for what we are doing right, and the, and it's nothing that's any different, we do constantly look at our children who are chronically absent, we constantly make communications with parents, we involve our counselors, our PPWs, and, and we, you, you've seen that attendance presentation before. We do, we, we take that information very seriously, um, you know, for kids that are not coming to school, because we know it matters for their achievement. It's, yes, you're right, I, I put the next, uh, elementary group up there.
Well, but, but still to Jim's point, I mean, you can get seven and a half points for academic achievement as a total, right? That's your maximum amount, but yet, they're going to give you ten on school survey results and fifteen on percent of students not chronically absent. So what, what's my focus on? Is my focus on my school climate?
Well, and, right.
Or is my focus on academic achievement?
Right.
If I'm, if I'm sitting here.
Go to the high school.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So for the high school rating, clip through to the high school there.
Yeah.
Dr. Montgomery. Go to the high school.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
So you'll notice that when we get, when we get to our high school, there are fifteen points for not chronically absent, and Great Mills only got five point five. So Great Mills got about thirty-five percent of the overall points available, they lost nine and a half points. And they still have an average daily attendance rate of ninety.
Wait, but, but my point is that their, that their, their total maximum, wherever Jim's side was, for, the total maximum for, for students not chronically absent was fifteen, right?
Right.
But if I'm proficient in math or, or.
You can only get seven and a half, right.
Like, I can only get seven and a half.
Yeah.
So what am I, what am I more focused on? Am I going to be more focused on actually teaching kids, or, you know, I mean, my daughter was chronically absent in third grade.
Yeah.
She still had all As and made up all of her work, and her test scores still reflected that, but yet, she's penalized, you know?
Um, one of the things that we noticed, since we're on the high school slide, and then we can go back and just kind of do summarize a little, just quickly the other.
Maureen's trying.
But one of the things that we noticed is the difference between Chopticon and Leonardtown, looking at the, at the, uh, and one's a four and one's a five, but it's three tenths of a point difference, you know, over here when we're looking at the academic side of it, but it's the attendance that is, has the, the greater difference.
Right.
And so that, you know, to me, is a, a reason why Chopticon would not be a five-star school, is the attendance. It's not their, it's not their achievement.
But again, respectfully, I mean, it is important that we have all these categories with which to evaluate schools. I mean, if we, I mean, we, we can't say that we don't want.
They shouldn't have the categories, I'm saying that the weight distribution is skewed based on what they're trying to prove. Because to me, if I'm looking at this coming in from the outside, if, if I'm looking at the Maryland State Department of Education, I'm like, "Well, you guys don't care about test scores, because you're only giving them seven and a half points total out of a hundred." Whereas for, for attendance, I'm going to give them fifteen, so.
Chronically absent, not attendance. You don't get, you don't get the attendance points, you just get points taken away for those people who are absent more than ten percent of the time.
Right. My maximum number of points are skewed, just oddly.
Well, the best is the survey results, though.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, I'll give you that, but I guess, I, the way I'm looking at it is that of the five elements, um, thirty-five percent, uh, reflects school quality and student success, but the other sixty-five percent, um, really reflects the, um, the academic side and the preparation side for students, so, um.
That's right. Again, they're nuancing the, the academic side with more than just performances on tests. You have graduation rate, uh, we have readiness for post-secondary, those things have never been calculated and quantified before, now we do. So, again, it's, um, you know, it's, it seems to be, as Maureen says, sixty-five, thirty-five, it does seem, that's, that's ultimately what we have to come back to, uh, with regards to, um, uh, the evaluation of, of schools in particular, so.
So I'm going to go backwards, because we talked about.
We, we go forward, Mr. Survey. I think we understand how that all works.
And anybody can go back and take a look if they would like to do that.
We'll just say congratulations to the charter school for having a five-star rating in the middle school category.
Yes.
There you go, cover that slide, Maureen, keep going.
Yes, okay. All right, Alex.
Yeah, so, so the school survey, just, this is a little bit of background. Again, um, as Ms. Bailey said, this was not generated from, um, St. Mary's County, this was generated from MSD. Uh, it was administered to all staff and students in this past year for fifth grade through eleventh grade students. Uh, so when we look at the elementary results, be advised that only fifth-grade students sat for the, uh, for the MSD survey. Uh, also be advised that, um, there were a lot of hiccups with the technology piece along the way, uh, so sometimes it was, we had still starting, um, uh, it, it wasn't as seamless as, as we all thought it would be, so.
Not on our side, on their side.
Right.
The survey crashing. So, uh, the survey design, there were four domains, and you could see them there, safety, environment, um, engagement and relationships, and then within each domain, you could have anywhere from two to four topics. And those are each one of the topics that are, that are listed under each one. And there could be variations, so we've got things, so, you know, for example, safety, they talk about everything from, uh, physical safety to bullying, so depending on what the, what the question was, and so there's a lot of nuances there, even with the data and the survey. Uh, the survey questions were developed by the MSD, um, Climate Survey Steering Committee.
So, um, the mechanics of the survey were as follows. Uh, the elementary-middle, uh, survey had fifty-five questions, the high school survey had fifty-six questions, and the staff survey had seventy-two questions. Um, the responses were to the right, the response choices from strongly agree all the way to strongly disagree. Uh, so it should take, at least it was, um, calculated to take thirty minutes in its entirety.
Can I ask a question here?
Please.
So for the middle school, or for, I'm sorry, for the elementary school survey, every child took that?
In fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade, every fifth grade.
Oh, in fifth grade, okay. Sorry, I missed that piece. All right, I'm like.
Five through eleven.
Okay.
Five through eleven.
Yeah, and the other, um, this, this very easily can be, um, as Maureen talked about, the four, uh, domains, the only difference between the staff and the students was the instructional feedback, and again, that's quantified with feedback from admin teams to staff. The, the students, of course, didn't take that particular part of the survey, uh, but staff did. So there really were ten elements for the, for the students, eleven elements, um, or topics for the, um, in a broad, umbrella-like way for our staff, so.
Back to the survey responses, the, the number of questions, and then the, this length of time, um, approximately thirty minutes. What, what amount of time did it really take?
Well, that's, that's, and this time counts against our two percent, you know, when we talk, uh, when we talk about the, um, the, uh, the assessments, this counts against our two percent. So probably a lot more than thirty minutes, to be honest with you.
The reason I ask that is, unless those questions are, um, very simple and a quick one-sentence read, um, to try to ask a fifth grader to answer fifty-five questions in thirty minutes, that's about thirty seconds a question. Good luck.
True.
Sillyness.
And as, as Maureen said, we did have a lot of problems on the MSD side with the survey, so.
It crashed several times.
Quite a bit.
Frank, kids lost their game.
Everywhere.
Here are the eleven components of the staff survey. Um, we have nine hundred and ninety-eight, nine ninety-eight staff members across the system to participate. Um, the way it's been calculated, some of the, uh, Maureen mentioned, the PDFs that we've uploaded, uh, basically anything above five point five, uh, was considered a more favorable, uh, rating for that particular element or slash topic, um, and anything less than five point five is considered less favorable. Um, so again, these were the, and it's hard to see, uh, but these are the eleven, um, results.
And we're going to summarize highs and lows when we, a little further in the presentation.
With respect to that, um, you mentioned with the survey crashing, um, and, and students losing their data and so forth, um, do you get the raw data, not, not person-specific, but rather to understand for each of those surveys, were every, was every question answered in all of those surveys?
That's a really good question. We, we don't have that breakdown to that, um, to that detail and to that granular level level. We just, we have demographic data, um, about the responsible, we don't have by, by item, by student, no, we don't have that information.
Okay. But in all these, all of these categories were positive responses, so like, for instance, bullying is eight and a half, eight point five, so that means that we're doing a good job based on what, because I don't, we don't know what the survey questions were, correct?
Yeah, I, I think that's how you interpret that, the, the resources that the school system has allocated towards bullying have, have been perceived as positive, uh, by the staff. That's how I would, I would perceive that.
Okay.
Interpret that.
Right, that's, I'm just making sure.
Yes.
That I'm not misinterpreting or assuming something that's not, since it is coming out of the educational department of the state of Maryland, you never know.
Strongly agree.
Need to clarify.
Strongly agree.
So here, here's the fifth-grade student results, and again, the end size was, we had fifteen hundred students, um, that, that, a high percentage of our students actually That a high percentage of our students actually did sit in fifth grade. And this is their responses. For the ten elements or ten topics, I think it was fifty five or fifty six questions that they answered. Middle school, as we move up, all sixth, seventh and eighth graders sat for this, at least invited to, thirty eight hundred approximately students sat. And as you can see, the kids seem to become more honorary as they move up.
We'll pull high school up next.
Dr. Jaffers, that surprises you?
I have kids of my own, I have.
I have found that with my child, as he gets older, he strongly disagrees more than he strongly agrees. It's been like, what is, what's your opinion on that? I strongly disagree.
Talk to him again when they're about twenty five, twenty six, and as a parent, you, you know, you do have a brain again.
Hopefully it rebounds, right?
And again, this was, last year, this was ninth grade through eleventh grade. You may have participated in the survey as a student yourself. So again, no twelfth grade participated, so.
So for survey results for staff, our highest performing categories were staff to student relationships and then resources that we allocate towards mitigating bullying. So the staff felt really good about those. And the lowest performing categories were student to student relationships and school resources that are mitigating substance abuse. So those are two things, you know, it's it's always, you get a survey information like this and and we've seen variations across the schools about, you know, where highs and lows were. These are the averages of everybody. So those those are things that we'll need to take a look at exactly why our staff feels that way with our lowest performing ones.
Students, is that how the students are treating each other?
Yes.
Or are acting within their classroom or what, or any of the above?
Yeah, I think it's.
Because once again, I don't know what the questions are.
How they're interacting with each other is.
Okay.
Exactly.
Student to staff was really high, but student to student, they're saying are, they strongly disagree. Disagree and or strongly disagree that student to student interaction, relationships are are as positive as they should be.
And interestingly enough, when we look at our students, are all three levels thought as a as a high that staff to student relationships were good. So we felt really good about that because all of the work that we do and that you've heard about with conscious discipline, responsive classrooms, all of those things, restorative practices, it is all about building relationships between adults and children. So all three levels put that as as a high response. Students did it and staff did it as well, so that's great. And then at the elementary school, they thought we do a great job, you know, giving information about mitigating substance substance abuse. So fantastic. Our middle school, they thought that we provided a lot of support for academics and behaviors. And our high school thought it was great, that we did a great job with student participation and engagement in the in the school community. So again, good results. Lowest performing areas, all three levels put physical environment condition of the school as a concern and we attributed that to the survey continually timing out while they were taking it. Because that was, that would honestly fall into that category, so that was.
Well, that and air conditioning.
Right.
Or if they took it in this, in the, close to the.
And at the middle and high school level, they got like a score score of one. And we can't explain how you'd get a one out of ten on a four point scale. Because there wasn't an option to get zero. So, you know, if if one's worth two point five and two's worth five and three's worth seven point five and four's worth ten, how do you get one? Somehow there are zeros.
It's the average of all those.
All those together.
But you couldn't click on zero.
Zero, two point five and a five, you would average those out, you know.
You couldn't click on zero, you had to give them a one?
You had, you had between, you had four responses. I strongly disagree, I disagree, I agree, I strongly agree. That's it.
There's no difference, there's like nothing in the middle.
There's no neutral. You had to pick.
Right, you had to choose either, right.
So what, so you have to have a one, two, three or four or something.
It wasn't like a Likert scale from the scale of one to ten. How much do you like Dr. Jaffers' ten?
Or it wasn't NA.
It wasn't NA. It was either I strongly disagree, which then that would have to be a zero, I guess. We don't know. So the thing is, at the end of the day, we don't, we don't know how the numbers came up. But we do know that our children at all three levels did not like the physical environment condition of the school, which includes heating, cooling, technology, access, that kind of thing on that day. And they were obviously.
You have to assume, and I know you don't like assumptions, it would have to be the HVAC. Sorry, Dr. Walker. But I mean, because I, I mean, that's what.
Or technology. If I was taking, if I was, if I was taking a survey and it timed out, I would be like, I strongly disagree.
And my answers were saved and I had to start again.
That's true.
Yes.
Or you didn't answer the question, right?
Possibly, it could be, it could be a non-answer and I would take that, interpret that as zero. I mean, Dr. Fransell in our office has actually broken down all the results by school. So every school has their own unique, so we should see the trends within the data. Exactly right. So if we see a school that's newer versus a school that's older, that may also lead to a more favorable response in the environment school. You know, again, we want, we don't want to, again, make assumptions. We want to look at the data and have that drive our our decisions. Be advised again that these are baseline. We don't, we're going to use this as a baseline for which to move forward.
We will be pushing, and I hope that Mabe is pushing it as well, is we want to see the questions. How how you can, how you can have respond to a survey and we don't know what the questions asked were, what, and then we're supposed to do something about it.
If I remember correctly, like, the questions were very specific. That's why, like, I wish there was like a neither, like, middle option, like indifferent, because they were so specific. And I'm just taking this, I'm like, I don't care enough about this specific situation, but you had to, like, choose one of them, but.
Like, they gave you, like, a scenario and then what do you think?
It was more like, so has have your fellow students ever said something?
I guess, yeah, so they so they give you scenarios and they made you pick and get.
Yeah.
See?
Well, it would be helpful to us.
That's why you're student to student so bad.
But that's, no, so when so when we, when we administer an assessment in St. Mary's County Public Schools, first of all, we have a lot of input into the assessment item. And then when it comes back, we look at how the children performed on the assessment item and we take a look at all of that. And then we unpack, and if we have an underperforming item, we go back and try to understand what the error pattern was with the child. So if so if I went through and asked a whole bunch of questions and I got a one out of ten, I would say, I want to understand what that, what was being asked, how it was being asked, how it was being interpreted. I would then even go back and we'd actually then talk to the people who administered the test or the children afterwards to say, you got this answer, why did you answer in this way? Because then you could be better informed on how to make things better.
Yeah, I mean, if it's if it's a general question on, say, I don't know, physical safety or or physical environment and you you have no idea what drove it, so you don't, you can't.
You can't fix it.
Laser focus, let's fix this particular thing.
Well, they need to cross-reference that with maybe the capital improvement funding. So we have ones across the board, so we should.
I just drew the arrow, I have it right here.
So where we start, we end, so.
To get more on that.
That that could explain that the Kansasville Elementary, one of their things is they keep being pushed off and.
Yeah, so they're ready.
No, they're not, they're not being pushed off this time.
No, they're, they're ready, they're ready not to be, yeah.
Yes, I I realize this, but when I, when I saw one of their, one of their, what was it? One of their items, I was like, oh, I wonder if that has to do with the fact that we we haven't been able to take care of. They're building to the point we have others.
But if you could just interpret from from the interaction that we're having here, like, we we really own our data and we really want to understand survey data because we want to know what's on the minds of our students and our staff. Like, that's really important. The other thing to recognize is that when they say staff, they just mean teachers. This did not include paraeducators, is my understanding, is that correct?
Another name.
Instructional instructional people, not administrators.
Well, I believe it's also, there's some conversation about who was given a ticket to to take to take the test itself.
There was. Did the paras get included in that?
I don't know, I'll have to check.
Because it was instructional staff.
There's only nine hundred people.
I I think Jill probably knows the.
Do you know that?
Conversation.
I mean, yes, you were not allowed.
Yes.
I was bombarded with, why don't I get a ticket?
Oh.
Right, so.
Why do I have my opinion expressed? Sorry, I'm talking, am I supposed to?
I asked.
He asked a direct question.
This is an information item, we're just, we're just for the good of the order. But that that's that's exceptionally important, whereas we absolutely believe that you have to have all the voices, especially if you're going to talk about safety in the building and the physical environment and all of those things. Mike, why wouldn't you, I'd want to have input of every every single person that's in that building.
Even when we were taking this test, we didn't know where this data was going. Like, we didn't know who was seeing it, who was doing anything with it. So that could have impacted the students' responses towards the questions.
Staff as well.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, when you talk about actionable data, there's a big difference between if you're answering a question about why we did poorly on physical environment and condition of the school, is a big difference between is it about the technology and or is it about, you know, the actual facility? Is it about the, you don't, you don't know. And how can you put together an actionable plan if you don't have entirely actionable data? So.
But we have had such, we have had such great conversations about this.
Because regardless, we take the data and the schools go back and they revise school improvement plans and they take a look at it and they share it with their staff and they share it with their community and they figure out what changes they need to make in their plans moving forward for the rest of the year based on this data that they have.
Because it's ten percent of your points.
So takeaways from this whole presentation, let's just summarize. Despite the the attempts at MSDE to have us all fail this report card and not.
Driving towards C, I mean, it's, it's designed, it's designed to have, you know, a meaty middle.
Our schools have still excelled, right?
As and Bs.
So based on the surveys that once again were not controlled or had anything to do with any questions that we asked, we fared extremely well on the key pieces that you want in a school, which are staff and student relationships, right?
Yeah.
And our students seem happy, except we don't think they like technology or their heating and cooling.
But that's an assumption on our part.
That's an assumption on our part.
And that, but that being said, you have, I mean, we, there is so much incredible effort and work done in keeping our kids cool and or and or heated and or technology. The amount of time, energy, effort and expertise we put in technology is fantastic. And the failure of this survey had nothing to do with the incredible robust fiber optic, you know, bandwidth, you know, that it is through no failing of anybody in the IT department, you know? It's that the the server on the MSDE side kept on crashing because they didn't think everybody was going to be taking the assessment.
In the window that they provided.
At the same, at the same time. So, you know, I, Mr. Howard's in the back too. And let me tell you, sir, thank you very much for where we are with technology, you know, the fact that they were able to take it on a wireless device in the in the comfort of their classroom.
Yet again, poor planning leads to poor performance.
But not on the part of our school.
No, by MSDE.
Down here, we're doing our due.
Well, so this last slide, I think, sort of accentuates the, we wanted to look at the larger context. And you could see just just a visual here, most of the survey results landed negatively for students. You can see across the state in school survey for the staff was sort of, as Scott said, the meaty middle to to the right of the middle on the distribution of the data points. More positive for staff, less positive for for students. And I think that our results, as we look at it by item, our students were less, yeah, they were less positive than the state was. Even the state by and large was negative for the for the student responses. And our staff was more positive than the than the 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 responses across the state for survey for for staff. So when we get down to the nitty gritty, that's what we are going to unpack. So again, just a baseline for which to move forward.
But we will be pushing for seeing what the questions actually were. And say, you know, that you you do need to crack open the box if you want us to be better. We have to, we have to see what's being asked of our of our people and of our kids. And when you ask something, you shouldn't just ask it of teachers because they are one, they are, they are incredibly essential and at the center of all the work, but they are supported by a whole host of of people from paraeducators to computer specialists to all kinds of support staff, so. That's why when we do the Sage group, it's everybody. It's not just, we just don't pull our Teachers of the Year. We pull all of our support professionals from all of our schools.
Does anyone have anything else?
I think, I thought we just asked our questions along the way.
I'm just double checking.
Okay.
But now we still have Tammy, so don't, don't, don't shut her down.
That was fun, that went well. Dr. Jaffers.
In terms of brevity.
But the thing is, when we, when we go into other counties and we talk to other school districts, I mean, we we do fall right into the data and pull it apart. And we've had great conversations with, and we're going to be going out and doing data team meetings at every single one of the schools and unpacking all of that. And and we approach it as what can, what can we learn from the data that we have? We always want it to be better, but like, what can we learn with the data that we have? How can we be better the next time we take a look at the same thing? And so we're going to have, we're going to have, we're going to have some very good conversations about this in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Jaffers, I will say, I I'm sort of scanning through the, some of the report cards for our schools on the MSDE site. There is a wealth of information there.
Yeah, there is.
I don't have twenty six slides. And I do believe in brevity.
If you did, that'd be troubling.
It would be.
That would be the budget.
I'll wait for the budget.
We'll have that soon enough.
For the month of November, we recognized one hundred and thirteen point one million dollars in revenues. Again, so two hundred and twenty five million dollar budget representing fifty percent of our revenues being received. Therefore, we're right on target. On the expenditure side, we have encumbrances outstanding of one hundred and thirty three point seven million dollars. Year-to-date encumbrances and expenses of two hundred and six point four million dollars with an available remaining balance of eighteen point six million dollars. We currently have encumbered or expensed ninety one point seven percent of our budget and there are no areas of concern. Are there any questions?
No questions, thank you.
No question.
None, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, let's see. I will say, Mrs. McCord, thank you very much for making the presentation yesterday at the commissioner meeting.
All right, does anyone have anything else they want to bring up? Okay. Our next board meeting will be after the holidays, January fifteenth, twenty twenty, at nine AM. We are adjourned.